I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show it is Monday, August 23rd at 6:00. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And we will start with our third item, Public Hearing to Discuss the 2021-2022 Budget and Proposed Tax Rate. And before we get started, I wondered if this gentleman would please stand, Mr. Jeff Cullenberg? We wanted to recognize Mr. Cullenberg for his years of service, and I know he played a big part in putting our budget together, crunching the numbers, making sure that each department was represented, and looking at where we can pinch pennies here and there, and how programs mesh with our budget. Unfortunately, we're going to lose him to Region 4, so he's off to work for the state. But on behalf of the Board, we appreciate the years of dedicated service and commitment and everything that you did for the district.
Mr. President, if we may, we will have a brief presentation before public comment portion of this hearing, and we are going to give an abbreviated version of the hour-long plus presentation that we did at the Board Workshop. So there's fewer slides and we'll go into less depth, recognizing that the earlier presentation was over an hour. So I'll just remind the Board that what has driven this process is budget goals and assumptions. And as the next slide shows, there's multiple assumptions made, and as an example, the first one being balance without accessing reserve funds unless necessary, so next year's budget does not envision any transfer from the capital and contingency fund. The next slide relates to risks, and so, for example, there's a reference to student enrollment and inflation as risks underlying the budget development. And then in the priorities section, there's four key priority areas listed here, and they had a major influence, as one would imagine, on the development of the budget. And so if you look at the first of these priorities, we went into detail at our workshop two weeks ago on some statistics that illustrate the focus on instructional services. We also talked about how the expenditure of federal ESER dollars complements this operating budget, and we gave some details relating to the additional staff that are being added. We also noted in terms of the next budget priority, we referenced the salary increases for staff, including a cost of living adjustment at 3% for staff, and as well as an increase of $14 per month in terms of the benefits contribution to offset rising premiums for our employees. And then we also went into detail two weeks ago regarding sufficiently funding our Safe and Secure Schools program, including maintaining the additional positions created in FY19, specifically the 15 SLO officers and 15 support counselors.
We also, one of our priorities is to maintain our fund balance and disaster recovery reserves. And tonight you will also approve an agenda item to set aside or make those fund balance commitments for capital, laptop, and disaster recovery funds.
And we continue the low administrative cost ratio that has historically been demonstrated in Clear Creek ISD with a cost, administrative cost ratio projected at being 4.31%, and obviously approximately half what the state administrative cost ratio standard is.
We also have built the budget this year on a tax rate reduction of 8.62 cents. So our maintenance and operations tax rate will be reduced by 4.62 cents, and the debt service tax rate will be reduced by 4 cents. So that's a total of, over the past five years, 15 cents on the MNO side and 7 cents on the debt service side.
And getting to the bottom line in terms of general fund revenue, you see that whereas revenue was projected in the fiscal year that we're concluding at 370.5 million, it's a slight increase in revenue to $371.2 million, and you see the revenue sources broken out there.
The major factors that went into our revenue changes this year, although it only increased by .8 million, we did have a big increase in our tax collections this year from our property value growth of over 8%. However, we will offset that by decreases in state funding by about $8 million, which is due to that property value growth increase. We'll also see some increases in revenue on the federal side from the ESER funds and also from state health and related service reimbursements. And finally, our other revenues are decreasing. We're not going to be balancing the budget with a transfer from capital and contingency fund, so that revenue source will decrease. We also wanted to point out the revenue by source, how over the past several years, our revenues have, the bulk of our revenues are growing on the local side. The state contribution toward our revenues has gone down from 38% to 29% over the past several years, while our local taxpayers are picking up, have picked up the major source of funds on the other side by 7.8%.
And you see that operating expenditures are increasing by approximately $800,000. And so you see some things netted against one another, 12.5 million in increases netted to 11.7 million in reductions. For example, under the increases, the biggest increase is the salary increase of 3% at a cost of $9 million. And then in terms of reductions, you see net departmental budget requests decreasing by approximately 300,000. We'd shared much greater detail with you two weeks ago, showing some increases, but then decreases that exceed those increases by approximately 300,000. And so, again, the net increase is approximately 800,000.
And just to go over, again, a few of the big factors that went into this budget. On the expenditure side, we had a 3% increase built into this budget, which is a $9 million increase in our budget. We also looked closely at all of our budgeted expenditures and were able to realign our payroll budget for a savings of 1.4 million. We also had some TRS increases on the payroll side of 1.6 million. But we were able to reduce our expenditures due to the ESER federal funds this year, so we'll be able to reduce the laptop purchase budget out of this particular fund by 3 million. And we'll also be able to use those ESER funds to reclass some of our expenditures by 6.5 million this year. We wanted to show you what are each dollar that we expend, how it's expended in the general fund. So 65 cents of every dollar goes directly towards instruction, the classroom. The other two large sources of dollars is the 6 cents goes towards school administration and another 6 cents goes towards the maintenance and repairs and operations of our schools and facilities.
And so this slide depicts staff additions in the new fiscal year, and you see to the far right is the source of funds. So general fund are in the primary operating budget, the other, either the federal ESER grant dollars or the federal IDA grant, which is designed to support students with disabilities. And so, as you all know, the Board of Trustees approved 4.4 special education positions in late April, and then there also are four and a half additional full-time equivalent positions, that's actually nine special education paraprofessionals, that is also in the area of serving students with disabilities.
The compensation plan that you approved last month included the 3% salary increase. We did want to show the new teacher's salary schedule for next year. There are, at those milestones, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of experience. Those particular folks that fall in those levels will receive anywhere from a 7 to 8.42% And we also, the Board approved increases to the CCISD contribution towards the health insurance premiums of $14 per month. That impact is about $550,000, and that will affect approximately 3,300 employees that cover theirselves and their family on our health insurance plan.
And we spent a good 15, 20 minutes on about 10 slides that this summarizes, but just hitting the key, you see that in terms of expenditures in coming years, when combined with revenues, relies on greater use of capital and contingency fund in future years. We're not envisioning any use of it next year, but we would for future years. And so, as we've discussed, we will, looking at a multi-year plan in terms of expenditure reductions, will be an important part of our work this year.
Just a note about fund balance, we do anticipate closing out this fiscal year with a $74.9 million general fund balance, which meets our Board policy goal. We also do plan that we will have a $40 million debt service fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, which also meets our Board policy goal. And then we plan our capital and contingency fund, we're estimating we'll have a balance of 53.9 million at the end of this fiscal year. So the three budgets that you will approve tonight are the general fund, you'll actually approve this at the functional level, so under expenditures, you can see the different functions and where the funds are budgeted. This is a balanced budget. The next budget that you will be approving is the debt service budget. As we spoke about, the tax rate that this is built on is a 4 cent tax reduction, and we do anticipate that even with that, we'll meet our debt service needs up through the '25, '26 fiscal year. A little bit about the child nutrition fund, we also are proposing a budget you'll approve tonight. It is a budget with a surplus of $1.8 million, and we do anticipate that that's mainly due to the federal Seamless Summer Option Program that will be providing the funds in this budget. Our cash sales are anticipated to go down, but because we're able to do that federal SSO program throughout the year, the reimbursement rates will bring our revenues up, so we will see a $1.8 million surplus in that fund. And finally, the tax rate, you will be presented this in September for approval, but tonight, the budgets are built on, again, the tax rate going down by 4.62 on the MNO side, and then 4 cents on the interest and sinking for a total decrease of 8.62 cents.
And that concludes our presentation this evening.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Menzai. I will open it up for public comment. If anybody would like to make any comments. That's fine.
What we do every year is analyze our payroll budgets, and over the years, there's excess budget in it, so we didn't, we don't hit, our actual expenditures don't always hit our budget expenditures, and so we've just cut it back to get it closer, so our budget's tighter in the payroll area.
And basically, and I apologize, I wanted to amend that and say that it was time for comment and not necessarily questions, but thank you for answering that. Is there any other comments? I'll open it up to the Board. All right. We'll see no comments. I appreciate the presentation. And it is 6:15. The Board will now move to closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, concerning purposes permitted by the Act, including 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, 551.074, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignments, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an employee.
based on that rumor.
And I call us back into open session at 7:23 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Two of our honorees, who you're going to hear more about in just a minute, will lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Ben Menesh and Tracy Maletta.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
And if you'll join me for a moment of silence. Next, we will do recognition of Mr. Cullenberg and Mr. Paul.
So we are delighted to start our meeting this evening, recognizing a few staff members who so clearly go the extra mile for our children. Three CCISD employees recently received the STAR Award from the Special Education PTA, or SEPTA. SEPTA serves and advocates for families and educators of children receiving special education services in our district. All three employees, the two that are with us this evening and one who can't make it, were nominated by a parent of a special needs student who wanted to recognize the kindness and outstanding care provided by these CCISD team members. Ben Menesh is a school bus driver in CCISD. He was recognized for his dependability and for his excellent communication, specifically how he communicates clearly with the parents and guardians of the special needs students who he transports every day. So congratulations. We're also thrilled to recognize Tracy Maletta. She's a special education aide at Clear Falls High School, and it's clear that she is something special to her students as she received a STAR Award for being a favorite among her students, even going out of her way when she sees her students out of school to say hello and to visit. And so please join me in recognizing her as well. And although she could not be here tonight, we also want to recognize Ms. Sandra Boyle, a now retired special education employee who served the district for several years as a much beloved speech pathologist. The STAR recipients were honored at a SEPTA meeting in May, but we really wanted to shine the spotlight on these individuals again here tonight. So congratulations to the two of you, and thank you for serving our students with a huge heart each and every day.
And thank you. Next, we'll move on to community input. The purpose of community input is for the entire Board to receive feedback from citizens. The Board will hear the public comments but will not respond. Matters brought forth that require a response will be addressed by the superintendent as appropriate. All information received is subject to verification. Community input is scheduled for 30 minutes and has two forums. Those requesting to address the Board in advance of the meeting are granted three minutes to address their topics, and those who sign up this evening prior to 6:30 are granted one minute. However, due to the large number of requests for speakers we have received for tonight's meeting, in accordance with BED regulation, we are limiting all speakers to one minute. I ask that we be respectful of that one-minute time limit. The clock should be provided in front of you. A staff member will monitor the time. The Board has requested that no personal names, insults, abusive, or profane language be used. Failure to follow this request may cause the public comment to be terminated. And our first speaker is going to be Ms. Candace Smith.
Before I begin, the packets that I gave y'all, they include statistics, letters from doctors specifically addressed to the district, and anonymous letters from teachers, and input from parents. So that's what's in there.
Okay.
I represent a group of over 2,000 concerned parents. Every night, I receive messages after message from the members sharing their horror stories, dead family members, spouses, immunocompromised parents, children with life-altering issues due to COVID-19, and they have no options. I know y'all receive far more than I do. I don't know how anyone could read them and not be compelled to follow the CDC guidelines as we did last year. A Board member once told me, "We should be proactive, not reactive." Instead, we are the last to set an example of strength and the next to be a cautionary tale and news headline. Last year, we did not hit 130 cases until January. Oh, Jesus. That's it?
That's it. Thank you, but we will read the information presented.
Scott Bowen told a parent, "There is no cause benefit analysis that would ever justify that," and really, that's what this comes down to.
Ms. Smith, thank you for your comment. That's it.
Money over life.
Friday night, May 21st, I was a fully vaccinated, zero-risk father who was celebrating the end of 5th grade at the pool party with his son. After my diagnosis, I sit before you a high-risk leukemia patient, balder than Dr. Bayard, who for 10 days a month is more high-risk than any single person in this room. But it is not my job to force others to protect myself. It is my job to protect myself. Research over the last year, and even more so in the last week, has shown that cloth masks, surgical masks, and improperly fitted K95s do very little to prevent droplet transmission. So that means that 99% of what we're going to send our kids with to school if there's a mask mandate does nothing to prevent viral transmission. But what does it do? It treats parental, some student, adult, and community member anxiety that's reared itself during this pandemic. Last summer, I presented data to the school board showing that masks optional school districts had the same or lower case rates than mask mandated school districts. I urge the district to continue their policy. If we want to get scared about Delta, let's look to England, which has had the same or lower case rates and hospitalization rates than with all prior variants. Thank you.
And after Ms. Cantera, we'll have Ruth Meyer and Connie Perkins. You may begin.
My name is Dana Cantera. I'm here to speak on how CCISD is recommending false prevention advice, communicating one-sided health opinions, and making reckless health decisions. You continually communicate through written and video messaging about your obsession with face coverings. However, I have yet to hear you communicate the science behind optimal vitamin D levels, management of comorbidities, and a normal BMI as the most effective ways to alleviate the burden that COVID has placed on society. Last week, there was communication about offering mass vaccination opportunities during the school day at every one of the intermediate and high schools in the next few weeks. Have you seen the data on deaths and cardiac damage from this vaccine in adolescents? You are playing a dangerous game. You are strongly recommending very harmful measures. The agenda evolving face coverings and vaccines are extremely complex, and they're not as clear-cut as you're presenting. You put the burden of the world on children while they are in your care rather than supporting and nourishing their physical, emotional, mental, and relational well-being. Enrollment will continue to decline if you continue to spend your time on matters other than providing superior education to the children.
And we have Ms. Ruth Meyer and Connie Perkins, please. And then right after that will be Connie Perkins and then Mr. Hendrix Perkins.
Well, I'll start with "I'm not here" about masks. I'm here to discuss our newest UIL sport, water polo. I'm here to discuss our newest UIL sport, water polo. Due to COVID, it officially starts on August 1st next year. Nine UIL games will be played prior to the start of school next year. Water polo is lumped into a budget line called Aquatics, which covers swim, dive, and polo. Aquatics has allocated $3,900 at each school. This budget actually only covers swim and dive. Water polo is actually funded 100% by booster clubs and parents at the cost of about $4,000 per year. Next year, all three sports and aquatics will run concurrently, and all three will be out of money by October 1st. I am asking you to add $4,000 to each school's aquatics budget this year because we should always fund our sports at the minimum level it takes to run them. Two, booster clubs are already struggling due to poor fundraising last year and will not actually be able to even cover water polo fees this year. Our season for next year begins October 1st during this year's budget. Now is a good time to look at the budget, since water polo is officially going UIL.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Connie Perkins and Mr.
Okay. Hi, I'm Connie Perkins. I was medically retired from the Coast Guard after 15 years, so let's leave it at "I know a little bit about being a part of a human experiment for Big Pharma." I want to start off with a thank you for currently providing our children the option to wear a mask. So, this is where we are. You all have failed as education leaders. At this point, this is not about rules. We are in a lawless land where income over ethics is becoming the standard. I can read between the lines. I don't care how many degrees or certification you have paid for, it doesn't give you common sense. If you can't see that there is something bigger at play here, then you do not deserve to be the leaders of education, and our children are not safe with you. Before March 2020, child abuse was not acceptable, but since that date, my children have had the ability to breathe fresh air taken from them. They were harassed and punished when they tried to voice their concerns, and then they were made to feel as if they were a walking disease. Due to your poor decisions and dictator-style leadership, both my school-aged children, A B students have decided to repeat math and Spanish. I commend them for taking their education seriously and wanting to be the best. Only this time, I will not entrust my children to you. I will be homeschooling them to have teachers do it for me.
I'd like to remind everybody, and thank you, Officer Galazia, but please, let's be respectful of others' comments. You know, first of all, it takes a lot to get up in front of your community and speak your mind. So, let's please be respectful, even if that opinion doesn't agree with ours, that we will give that person that due respect to listen to what they have to say. So, Mr. Hendrix Perkins, after that, we'll have Rosia Garcia and Sonia Koot. Mr. Perkins.
I just want to say that in school, whenever we would come inside from recess or, like, doing science outside, the teachers would make us wear masks inside after we were outside and it was super hot and we were all sweating and could barely breathe. And the mask just made it worse, and one of my friends almost passed out, so that was really difficult for us. And whenever I was in class, I had the cough really bad, but, I mean, I was scared too because I didn't want to get accused of having COVID or sent to the office to get tested. So, I was just, like, it's not just me that's scared, but it's other kids that are scared too. And also, in the same class, I could not breathe, and I had to really, I have bad allergies, so I took off my mask, and I was socially distancing, so I was six feet apart from everyone, and then the teacher kept on telling me to put on my mask, and I respected her. I put it on, but then after a while, took it off, and then I got sent to the office willingly.
Garcia and Sonia Koot, and Constance Miller, after that.
Members of the board, my name is Rosia Garcia, and today I want to talk about the importance of mandating masks in our schools. We know that kids are less likely to experience severe illness or death. The long-term consequences of COVID on neurological, lung, metabolic, and cardiovascular are still unknown. Study after study have shown that wearing a mask works. It helps prevent the spread. It protects our children, our teachers, and our staff. Making masks optional goes against the guidance of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatric. It's simply not enough. On Friday, the Houston Texas Medical Center issued an open letter to the city calling for masking for all schools. In summary, it said, "These are not ordinary times. Pediatric cases are on the rise, and in some areas of the country, they're beginning to strain the ICU capacity." Last week, the Texas Supreme Court cleared the way for school districts to require masks in the classrooms. We don't have an excuse anymore. Doing the right thing is not always easy. However, as the leader, it's your job to make sure that our kids are safe. Listen to the scientists. Listen to the doctors. We still have time to do the right thing. Our kids are depending on us to protect them.
My name is Sonia Kootay. There's two items that I speak on behalf of some parents that we'd like the school board to share, as we'd like to understand these items. We'd like to understand the CCISD board criteria under which masks will be mandated at the CCISD schools for all, including CCISD personnel, students, school visitors, and any others who come in contact with those attending school. The second item, understand how public health and science data are being used to proactively guide and develop plans given at the CCISD in choosing to act differently, and we'd like to understand how these decisions are made. We ask our students to demonstrate leadership. I ask tonight the CCISD to do that in a proactive manner. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Constance Miller, Patricia Knox, and Christine Grabay.
First of all, thanks for all you do. I know your job is not easy. In November 1990, there was an act signed into law, and it was called the Self-Determination Act. This law ensured people that government could not interfere with the person's right to determine his own healthcare. We have been conditioned for the last year and a half to view our freedoms as selfish, and government and local leaders have overstepped their authority by issuing mandates that were not laws. Our children have been affected in ways that are way worse than a virus that is 99.997% survivable without any treatment. Influenza, the common cold, tuberculosis, whooping cough are all infectious diseases that spread through the air. I ask you, why have we not worn masks for all these diseases? The answer is clear: they do not work. In a Stanford mask study, the physical properties of medical and non-medical face masks are more than 1,000 times larger in diameter than SARS-CoV-2. This means wearing face masks is like putting up a chain-linked fence to keep a mosquito out. I implore you, continue to keep our children free from these mandates and allow parents to choose what is best for their family. A choice is all any of us want.
Ms.
Our children are more at risk from the physical and mental harm of wearing a face mask than from dying from COVID-19. Face masks force the rebreathing of exhaled air, causing children to suffer from low oxygen levels and toxic carbon monoxide levels. They also force metabolic waste to enter the lungs and the brain. Under these conditions, a child is more likely to get sick and become sicker than if they had been allowed to breathe without a face covering. A July 2021 study in JAMA Pediatrics reported that within three minutes of placing a face mask on healthy children, their carbon dioxide levels were several times higher than the permissible level set by OSHA. Within three minutes, one seven-year-old child's CO2 level was 25,000 parts per million. That's five times the permissible adult level and nearly at the eight-hour cumulative maximum for an adult. To require a face mask on a child is unhealthy. It's aversive, and it's physically and psychologically harmful to the point of being abusive.
Thank you, Ms. Next, we'll have Christine Grabay, Stacy Cruz, and Martin Hughes. Grabay, Cruz, and Hughes. Did I pronounce that correctly?
It's actually Rose Harvey. I'm filling in for Christine. Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine.
Is that okay? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. As we have progressed along in the last two years, we have seen a division of political affiliation and conflict on where we stand in this so-called pandemic. I will not, however, stand here before you to convince you on how I feel or how I do, but I do have respect for your thoughts, your opinions, and what best works for you and your families, as I would hope you would mine. I also understand, as a board of trustees, that you need to make tough decisions regarding our children. I ask you to consider the following as you make your decisions. Do masks really work? Does this impair their learning? Does this give our children drowsiness and fatigue? Can our children breathe after wearing this for eight hours? Does it make it difficult for them to concentrate? Our children's basic rights are being violated by the mandates and masks of social distancing. I'd like to share one other thing Dr. Williams shared with us, and I quote, "Sometimes the joy is the source of your smile, and sometimes your smile can be the source of your joy." End quote. What joy can we have with mask mandates? Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Cruz, Martin Hughes, Julianne Pretty.
Actually... Let me restart. Okay. It's okay. My name is Dr. Angie Farrell. I'm speaking in her place. Since my medical expertise doesn't seem to have warranted much help here, I'm going to go after putting you on notice about criminal violations. A crime constitutes moral turpitude if it involves an element and personal misconduct in the private and social duties in which a patient owes to its fellow human beings or to society in general, which characterizes the act done as an act of baseness, vileness, or depravity, and contrary to the accepted and customary rule of right and duty between two human beings, conduct done knowingly contrary to justice, honesty, and good morals. Section 22.05 of the Texas Penal Code lists the offense of deadly conduct in violation of which punishes a person who recklessly engages in conduct that places another in imminent danger of serious bodily harm. It's categorically a crime involving moral turpitude. Recommendations before we get... No recommendations.
I will remind you to please forward those remarks. If you didn't get through your presentation, please forward those to the board.
First, I'd like to say thank you for your service to the district, all of you. Good evening. My name is Martin Hughes, and I have two children in this district. My daughter is a freshman, and my son is a senior at Clear Falls. I would like to address you about the growing concern over COVID-19 and the idea of reinstating a mask mandate. I am asking that, as you count your emails every day, that you also count the children's faces that you see. Everyday parents are making the decision to send their kids to school and choosing what level of risk they will tolerate. As emotions flare, I ask that you pay attention to what is actually happening. All parents want their children to be safe and secure, and any argument to the contrary is simply an emotional outburst. Any idea that we should return to a mask mandate at this point is not a vote on the effectiveness of masks, but a vote on your perception of the incompetence of parents in this district to do what is right for their children. Your constituents have already spoken, and the vast majority have overwhelmingly told you they do not want a mask mandate. Simply by sending their children to school, unmask. It's not up to you to make a medical decision for my children or any others. Let parents decide how best to protect their children.
And we have Julianne Pretty, Rhonda Velders, I repeat again, we have Julianne Pretty, Rhonda Velders, and Audrey Williamson.
Rhonda Velders? Am I next?
Yes, Rhonda Velders?
Thank you.
Yes.
I couldn't hear out there. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I would like to remind you of a consent agenda item from July 15, 2021, the Human Resources Report from KCU Pry, regarding district strategies including "safe and nurturing environment, learning experiences that inspire student achievement, agency and growth, cultivate social and emotional capacity and commitment, to service before self, expand and organize capacity to accomplish our strategic intent, and, most importantly, ensure our community, parents, and staff, and students exercise shared ownership of our mission." Do not forget these district strategies. I would also like to remind the board, the U.S. Department of Education, Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment. PPR is a federal law that affords certain rights to parents of students attending elementary or secondary schools with regards to any survey, analysis, or evaluation that asks students to reveal information of a personal nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Next, we have Audrey Williamson, Christine Perizzo, Andrea Miller, Cindy Chan. So, Ms.
Does it start when I start? Sorry.
Yes.
My name is Audrey Williamson. My daughter is in first grade. I'm here supporting that face covering should be optional. Many of these advocating mandatory face coverings have been taking their kids to malls, restaurants, summer camps, daycares, and amusement parks without knowing others' vaccination status or whether those there would be wearing a mask. Why should returning to school be any different? Forcing masks on children after a summer of freedom is unreasonable and infuriating. We're treating our children like germ-spreading second-class citizens. Louisiana has a mask mandate for ages two and up, and yet those schools are struggling with COVID cases. I don't have time to read what I researched, because I only have a minute. I implore the school board to leave medical decisions up to parents. We know what's best for our children, and for those who feel a sense of security with face coverings, I support them. Just the same, it is my right to send my child to school showing her smile. I asked Margaret to talk to me about how she felt about the masks last year. I said, "Just tell me whatever." And she said, "I can't breathe in a mask."
Ms. Perizzo, Miller, and Chan.
First of all, I'm really proud of the community for coming out to speak out against mask mandates. You guys are awesome! I have a point to make, though. In June, this board promised that we would go back to normal: no masks, no quarantines, no forced distancing. And then, less than one week before the first day of school, via email, we were told that there would be three weeks of no visitors on campus, and elementary school children would be forced to distance. This is most definitely not going back to normal. Distancing is depriving our children of socialization, which is essential to development at this young age, and in the place of the carefree love that they once gave, they are now physically afraid to get close to their friends. And now, once again, fearful adults want to implement another mask mandate. The scientific rationale for asking anyone to wear a mask is questionable at best, but to children, it is especially cruel. We cannot make decisions for our children based on fear. This is the first time in history that we are expecting children to protect adults, and this is not their burden to bear. For once, this board needs to do the right thing and make its decisions on facts.
Ms. Miller, Ms. Ms. Miller, Ms. Chan, and Sheri Thaxton are next.
The TEA has stated that they will not act against school districts that issue mask mandates. Yet CCISD has not issued one and claims it's about personal choice and lack of legal clarity. During this health crisis, debates over personal choice or legal clarity should play no role in decision-making. The only clarity we need is from health authorities, and the medical community is overwhelmingly in support of mask mandates for all students and staff. In January, my children's pediatrician died from COVID, which she contracted shortly before the vaccine became available. Vaccines that are not yet available to my children. Why must more kids fall ill, suffer long COVID, or die from this virus when a simple mandate that was successful last year could prevent many cases? School administrators are supposed to be defenders of student health and safety, not gatekeepers of legal barriers and political controversy. Politics should have zero weight in this decision. It is a health issue and should follow medical guidance. It's not a matter of legal clarity, but one of medical and moral clarity. Thank you.
Cindy Chan, Sheri Thaxton, and Kay Schrader.
Hello, I'm speaking as a parent and a physician for those who care for those with COVID. Many people here are missing the point that masks aren't primarily meant to protect the wearer, but also protect those around them from getting the germs of those wearing the mask. Both our children and adult hospitals have been full for weeks. Most recently, an entire middle school in Beaumont has been shut down due to COVID. However, we are doing less COVID mitigation now than we did last school year. Other school districts, including Beaumont ISD, have been able to find a way to require a mask mandate. We need to do the same. We should also look into other things that we can do to mitigate the spread of COVID. Some of these things may include stronger messaging to support masking, funding bonuses for school staff to get vaccinated, funding paid time off for teachers who are in quarantine due to significant COVID exposure, schools to assist in contact tracing, HEPA filters in classrooms in the school air-conditioning units to help decrease viral burden, online learning for those who are interested. I realize that some of these mitigation methods will require funding, and for that, we'll fully support increasing the school tax rate. Thank you.
We have Ms. Sheri Thaxton, Kay Schrader, and Sandra Hill. Sandra Hill.
I'm the parent of two children who are too young to be vaccinated. I'm here tonight to add my voice to that of many other parents, some of whom did not want to come here tonight due to their own exposure, a group of parents that trusts in scientific and medical communities. The Delta variant of the virus, as we all know, is very infectious. Even amongst the fully vaccinated, there are breakthrough cases, and they are spreading it to other people, including to children. This is why CCISD needs to go back to the drawing board when it comes to how we approach this pandemic. This year is not like last year, and we need to treat it as such. I want to see a commitment that when the executive order is out of the way, we will mandate masks. I want to see incentives for teachers to mask up now. I want to see clear messaging consistently from the district that this is not about personal choice, this is about our responsibility as members of a community. I want the district to step up and protect our students. I want you to do what is right, not necessarily what is easy, and I think is very clear based on science, what is right. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Schroder, Kay Schroder, Sandra Hill, Michael Goodman.
I'm going to deviate a little bit. I want to clarify that our children are not your social engineering projects. Your job is to teach academics, reading, writing, math. Instead, our classrooms are turning into indoctrination camps. Equity is a rebranded form of critical race theory, which is Marxist at its roots. Parents, do not be fooled. This equity audit disguises its true intent in innocuous language. Implementation of these policies sow discord and division, just like it did in Loudoun County, Mr. Williams. You should take no action on this audit. And regarding masks, there is no science that justifies oxygen deprivation and prolonged periods of inhaling one's own CO2. It oxidizes the blood, causing headaches, gastric issues, fatigue, and a host of serious other issues I can't get into right now. Further, the masks contain harmful bacteria, stifles speech, development, and socialization. And for those who believe and you can trust the science, the CDC owns the patents.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schrader. Thank you, Ms. Schrader. We'll have Sandra Hill, Michael Goodman, Jennifer Koss. I'll remind everybody, please, let's be respectful to the one-minute time limit.
Hi, I'm Sandra Hill, I have two children in CCISD. And in regards to PPRA, Protection of Pupils' Rights, school district must obtain written consent before students are required to submit to a survey that contains one or more of the protected areas. It governs the administration to students of a survey, analysis, or evaluation that concerns one or more of the following eight protected areas: Political affiliations; Mental and psychological problems of the student or the student's family; Sex behaviors and attitudes; Illegal, antisocial, self-incriminating, or demeaning behavior; Critical appraisals of other individuals with whom respondents have close family relationships; Legally recognized, privileged, or anomalous relationships, such as those of lawyers, physicians, and ministers; Religious practices, affiliations, or beliefs of the student or the student's parents, or income other than the required by law to determine eligibility for participation in a program or for receiving financial assistance under such program.
And I will remind everyone, all of our speakers, if you aren't able to get through your remarks, please forward those to the board. Next, we'll have Michael Goodman, Jennifer Koss, and Erin O'Connell.
First, I'd like to thank the CCISD servants who are here today. Thank you for your time and service. My name is Michael Goodman, I have a master's in divinity, I'm an ordained minister. I have a master's and a doctorate in public health. I'm here today because I'm a father to two wonderful, brilliant children, ages eight and 10. Prior to this school year, both children were happily enrolled in Gilmore Elementary. Until their safety can be ensured within CCISD, they will not attend CCISD schools. The big question, really, the only question for you for the CCISD board is this: Will you wait until more children, staff, teachers, and families have needlessly suffered from the effects of COVID-19? Or will you act today to require vaccines when possible, social distancing, and universal masking today? These measures are safe and effective, regardless of what we make up about them, that's true. The alternative is up to 15% of our children suffering from long COVID effects, and some children even dying. These costs are simply too high for my family, so I hope you make the right choice. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Koss, Erin O'Connell, and Joshua Foxworth.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Koss, I have three children in CCISD, and this is our 10th year in the district. I am here this evening to state that I do not support a mask mandate for our district, nor do I support the administration of COVID shots in our schools. I believe people should have the own right to make up their choice if they want to mask up or not, or to get their shot, but it does not need strongly encouraged nor forced, our children do not need to be forced to do so. I would also like to request a strong campaign to educate our children about their immune systems and what they can do to keep them strong. I do not understand why there isn't an intense focus on this, especially for such a time as this. We know exercise, sunshine, food choices, socializing, and stress management all have a very important part in developing and maintaining a strong immune system, but where is the attention and the focus on this? How are we educating our kids about this? I do not support a mask mandate. I do not support COVID shots being given in our schools. However, I do support education on healthy immune systems, how to build one, and I would like to see that included in our COVID protocols. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Erin O'Connell, Joshua Foxworth, and Chris Haas.
Hello, my name is Erin O'Connell, and I'm a ninth grader at Clearbrook. Thank you for letting me speak today. The CDC has stated that masks should be worn to prevent the spread of COVID-19 and the Delta virus in situations where the chances of catching the virus are moderate to high. As proven by the daily increasing numbers, CCISD meets this criteria. Something else that you may not realize is how much hope many students have resting on this requirement. Many students, like myself, have medical problems that would make COVID much more severe for them. Everyone wearing masks can decrease the chance of catching COVID-19, helping these students significantly. Many of us are coming back from clear connections this year. We went a year without being able to go to school with our friends, without being able to study, to talk, to be with our peers. Now that we finally get a chance to enjoy the things that we missed out on, we have to worry about the kid next to us coughing who doesn't have a mask on. We worry about going to the nurse's office and about working on a group project out of fear of ending up in the hospital. We worry about bringing the disease home to our families or unintentionally spreading it to our friends. We should only have to worry about being kids. For the sake of the students attending your schools, please issue a mask mandate. Thank you.
Hi, the equity report that came out this week had three conclusions. The first was that there are too many white teachers in CCISD. The second is that there are too many white students in the Gifted and Talented Program, and the third is that there are too many non-white students that are being punished. And that's not my words, those are yours. There are two inferences that can be made from this. The first is that any time the white ethnic group outperforms the other ethnic group, the sole factor that can be held accountable for that is some sort of ill intent on the behalf of those white people. The second is that you are literally defining equity as when white people are the least performing ethnic group in the entire school district. So I'm asking you, where are you going to go with those conclusions? What are the policies you're going to implement? Are you actually going to say that equity means white people have to be this performing according against the other ethnic groups, and they all have to be equal? Are you going to be okay if white people are less than everybody else? What are the policies you're actually going to implement to make this happen? Thank you.
We have Chris Haas, Lauren Goodman, and Kenny Gale. So Chris Haas, Lauren Goodman, Kenny Gale.
Hi, good evening. I'm a physician and parent with a master's in public health. I'd like to propose to the board that there's a relook at the current mitigation protocols that are in place. The protocols should consider more on hospital capacity and hospital staffing. Right now, we have numbers in the single digits and in teens in our schools. If we let that go to a number where we have 10% absences, we will have, for example, an elementary school is 75 kids out with absences. In high school, 230 kids out with absences, potentially due to COVID-19. Indications from our medical community is that we have longer wait periods for patients even to be admitted for even non-COVID emergencies, sometimes even having to wait days to be admitted to the hospital for surgery. We have right now where a community outbreak of COVID-19 variant or other infectious virus would make us a stage three, which I believe we're at. We've also had local health authorities asked to issue health orders. We're at underneath stage two. So, we need to be more clear in protocols and different parameters where stages should be identified in consultation with public health officials.
Thank you, Mr. Haas.
Thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Lauren Goodman, Kenny Gale, and Glenn Schwim.
Members of the school board, thank you very much for your time and for your service to our children. I'm a parent of a third and a fifth grader and a pediatrician in our community caring for many CCISD students as dear patients. In the past week, since classes have started, I have already seen a significant increase in positive cases among students and their family members in my clinic. Colleagues in hospitals around the area are already having difficulty finding an inpatient bed for kids with COVID pneumonia, which means they are having a hard time finding inpatient beds for kids with everything else as well. Delta variant is an entirely new beast, and we must adapt. Data from Canada already shows that kids are significantly more likely to get hospitalized with Delta than with the strain we saw last year. We have more children hospitalized in the state of Texas with COVID right now than ever before. We know that masks work, that's not a question. Please accept these eight pages, including 83 study citations and expert policy recommendations to put to rest any doubt on this issue. They are the simplest and most effective way to keep our students in class and learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. And next, Kenny Gale, Glenn Schwim, Laura Campbell.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to talk to you guys about the equity audit. First, I am perplexed as to why we spent $14,000 on this equity audit. I also want to know why the auditors that prepared the report are using the same standards and methodology that they've used since 1979. Surely, we've progressed since then. Every tab that I've tabbed here is a chart that references ethnicity. Why is this important in an educational setting? You can call it what you want, but this is the beginning of CRT, and we've made it abundantly clear, we do not want it in our school district. Teachers just want to teach their students. They want all of their students to succeed, irregardless of skin color or economical background. Just let the teachers teach our students. This audit and the recommendations in it will only further divide us, not bring us together as one unified community. But maybe that's the whole goal.
I could provide you with a wealth of university research substantiated by credible medical data to make my claims, and you could give me yours. However, I'm not here to do that. What I am here to do tonight is to demand personal choice for my precious and innocent children that ultimately have no say in this matter, two of which are in the audience tonight, along with both sets of grandparents that wholeheartedly agree with what I'm about to say. Some of my peers might be surprised to hear me say that masks do work. In the right context, masks are effective and necessary. For example, firefighters wear an airtight SCBA mask when entering a smoke-filled building. I'm sure you would agree that this makes perfect sense. However, mandating masks in schools simply doesn't work with COVID-19. Studies have shown that their infection rates either didn't change during mandates, and in many cases, infection rates were actually higher. I will also bring to light an important question that we have to ask: What is a mask? To what specification of material composition is required to prevent virus particles from being transmitted? Stating that students are required to wear face covering or mask is completely ambiguous and leans much more toward optics than science. I want to be clear in my stance. I am not against folks wearing masks or getting a vaccine if that's their prerogative, but I will absolutely not be told to mask my children. I will have to find an alternative.
Thank you, Ms. Schwim, otherwise. Ms. Campbell?
Hello, my name is Laura Campbell, and my child lives in Clear Springs. He is here tonight. My child has been seeing his same pediatrician since we moved to Lake City before he started kindergarten. He receives every required vaccination in her office. My son is in sports. He has had every school and sports physical in his pediatrician's office. As a parent, I feel his health is very important and needs to be consistently checked by his doctor who knows his health history. I do not use the public school system as a medical home for my children, not for sports physicals, and I certainly will not for any vaccines. My concern is the use of our tax dollars for inappropriate use for county vaccination clinics in our schools. I want our tax money to be used for educating my child and the children of CCISD. Parents are currently not allowed to help in the classroom, eat lunch with their children, or even drop off lunch to our kids, but it's okay to have strangers occupy a space where anyone off the street can come in for a COVID injection. That does not make sense. Children cannot give consent for anything medical, not for medicine, not vaccination, not examination, without parental consent. I do not agree or consent to... I do not agree or consent with the use of our tax dollars to host vaccine clinics in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Betty Prentice, Michelle Chavallier, Amber Lynn.
Good evening. I'm speaking sort of off the cuff. I just wrote this a few minutes ago. I will say that both my son and daughter are home in quarantine from exposure at ward. I also say that this mask, my children's masks, are perfectly breathable, much more breathable than an intubation tube. What are we doing? Why are we listening? Why are we not listening to medical professionals and our pediatricians? We are in a global pandemic. I know not every person in this room has school-aged children or children at all, so I guess maybe not all of us have as much to lose. Thank you.
Ms. Michelle Chavallier, Amber Lynn, Lisa Lefano, and Sebastian Lefano.
For the past five years, I have entrusted my child's education and safety to CCISD. Through hurricanes, school shootings, and even the initial handling of COVID-19, I have seen how quickly our district can rally when it's necessary. Unfortunately, I no longer have that confidence. I am well aware of the rationale given to follow Executive Order 38. I still strongly disagree with our district's response. Stand up and speak out against something. We teach our children that if they see something, they should say something. All over our country, we're seeing in real time the consequences of masks being optional. Yes, going against an executive order is risky. There can be legal, political, and personal consequences, but from the beginning, it's been clear this executive order was not morally just. And now you have the backing of the U.S. President and Secretary of Education. Yes, life is complicated and there are often gray areas. This, however, is not one of those times. Enforce masks to protect lives and give the best possible chance for students to have consistent in-person instruction. This is a public school district. It's time to put personal responsibility back on the shoulders of those actively working against public health. Thank you.
And Amber Lynn, Lisa Lefano, Sebastian Lefano.
Good evening. I come today as a parent of some amazing students in our district. As a parent, my utmost goal and privilege is to give my kids an opportunity to safely spread their wings, yet at the same time knowing I have a deep responsibility to keeping them safe until it's time for them to leave that safe nest and go out to make the most of their lives. I ask and pray to the board to create stronger elementary COVID protocols, including but not limited to: mask, at least at the elementary level, for children that are not eligible yet for vaccines; notification to parents for close contact tracing purposes; and increased cleaning measures to include wiping down desks between student youths, as well as some virtual learning opportunities for those children. We all know that between those four school walls, amazing things happen. Give our youngest learners the ability to grow and learn in a safe environment. Thank you.
Lisa Lefano, Sebastian Lefano.
Hello, my name is Debbie Branch, but I'm speaking on behalf of Lisa. I just want to say that my children do not go to CCISD, but they did. I have a son who has special needs. He has autism and his childhood vaccines injured him. And he, this has been an extremely difficult year for us at home with him, and there is no way my child will ever wear a mask, will never receive another vaccine. So, I hope that CCSD understands that these measures are not healthy for children. I did try and put a mask on Scott once at the movie theater because that's something that he and I enjoy doing. And the look in his eyes of non-understanding and the fear, I immediately took it off. But, I'm just imploring you to please think about the children. These measures are not healthy and they're not helpful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sebastian Lefaro. I'm just here quickly to point out that, first of all, what are we teaching our children? This is an educational institution and we're not valuing, you know, data-backed fact, we're just unsubstantiated claims left and right. I want to see numbers and I want to see resources where I can back that up and I'd like to see, you know, credit, just, I'd like more clean data. Also, to the parents in the audience and at home, it's very obvious that the overwhelming majority of you value liberty and justice for all, value your freedom. And, and let me just say, any elected official that will encroach on that is not willing to listen to you. They're just appeasing you in this moment. We are in the "what are you gonna do about it?" phase right now. It's time for us to step up and run for, run for school board. Dilute the ballot, just go out there, fill it up. It's time to take action and do something. Thank you.
And we have James Paterini, Roy McIntyre, Aleen Barcello. James Paterini, Roy McIntyre, and Aleen Barcello.
Good evening. I'm James Paterini. I'm an internal medicine physician and I'm a flight surgeon at NASA Johnson Space Center. I'm also a parent of a CCISD student. My wife, Harita, wanted to be here tonight, but she couldn't because she's an infectious disease specialist and she ran late because she's rounding on patients right now. A sizable number of them are COVID patients. These are our neighbors and yours. She's been doing this for over a year and a half now and I think it's okay if I speak a little for her on her behalf and say that she and all the doctors and nurses and providers in this country are pretty tired. Masking is safe and effective at reducing the spread of this virus. If we can diagnose you, treat you, and code you while we're wearing masks, which is what doctors do, I promise you, our children can learn and play with them. It's also cheap. There's a lot of emotion here tonight. I want to say I respect all of the people on all sides of this who are here tonight because I know everyone loves their children. And I know this isn't an easy job for you. I only ask that when it comes to public health and risk management, you listen to the medical doctors and epidemiologists in your community and you do what is right instead of what is clearly popular.
And next, we have Mr. Roy McIntyre, Aleen Barcello, and Connie Radisso.
Good evening. There's obviously a lot of concern tonight that our right to choose will soon be under assault, and I just had three questions about it. The first one is that no doctor in a biologically hazardous environment ever removed his personal protective gear to have a chat or a glass of water or a snack, and yet the last speaker removed his mask. I've seen many of y'all out there remove yours to talk tonight. Should we understand that that mask removal is an admission that they're unnecessary, the environment is not hazardous, or that everyone's holding their breath while they speak and eat? Second, I saw a car outside with a sticker that said "Science works whether you believe in it or not." Are any of you in possession of any scientific studies that are indicating that the use of masks in any way reduces the transmission of the flu? And third, I'm well aware that no such scientific studies exist. So my final question, would you please enumerate for us in writing the situations in which school district policy will be made on the basis of fear, propaganda, and political conformity rather than science, statistics, and common sense?
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. And Aleen?
Hello. My biological daughter had the right to enroll to pre-K for free because she's ESL. Her brothers didn't. So with this Equity Audit, what else is she going to get because she has an immigrant mother? Is that the message that she's less capable because she is a daughter of an immigrant? Is that the message that as a minority, she's forever a member of a case and there is nothing she can have achieved unless given by the government or handed down from stronger, more capable, harder-working white people? Is the message that she needs a Brazilian teacher to teach her or else she won't be capable of learning as her peers? While all that, at the same time, well-versed in English to know at the tender age of five what her pronouns are? Thank you for your time.
Connie?
Hi, my name is Connie Radisso, and first of all, I'd like to say thank you all for serving our community, for serving our students. I want to say I'm not anti-mask, I'm not anti-vaccine, I am anti-mandate mask. I am anti-mandate vaccine. One of the things that I'm afraid of is if we make these masks mandatory, we're handing our teachers and our administrators hammers to use on our children. There are times when they need to use their own critical thinking and discernment, move feet away, take that mask off if they need to take it off without fear of having that hammer come down on their head. If some, if they have to be three in a seat on a bus, that that might be a good time to put a mask on. You can carry a mask with you and use it when it's smart to use it. You don't have to have it all the time. There are many people that believe that these masks don't work and many that believe there are, but we don't need that. Also, audit. Please do not spend another dime on this audit. Thank you.
And that concludes our community input. I wanted to thank everybody for their comments, especially our young folks, because like I said, it's our youth that are our future. So, I know we had a student, we had a student, I think, believe from Clearbrook, so thank you for, you know, having the courage to stand before your community and speak. And now, we will move to our program spotlight.
Good evening. I also want to thank everybody who has come out this evening to provide public comment. And, obviously, we've just started our, started the new school year. For, in most schools, we started last Monday with pre-K students, kindergarten students, sixth and ninth grade students on Monday the 16th, with the exception of three schools that we'll talk about in a moment. And then, on Tuesday, obviously, we brought back the remaining grades. And it is wonderful to see our schools bustling with learning. We can be both incredibly enthusiastic about this new school year and also be cautious. And it was great that, for the first time, we had all of our students in the building since March of 2020. It was great that our students were engaged in reading, writing, mathematics, science, and art, music, and PE. There was a reference earlier to joy. And so, yes, we need to be cautious, but it's also wonderful for our students to be experiencing the joy of learning in person. In the next agenda item, you'll hear more details about, about our response to COVID-19 and public health mitigation practices, but in my brief remarks for this item, I just want to talk about some of the logistical accomplishments that contributed to the success of the reopening of our, of our schools with the new school year. First of all, transportation and child nutrition. Safely transporting more than 20,000 students daily is no easy, is no easy task, so our deepest thanks to the Transportation Department for greeting children with a smile in the morning and returning them home safely in the afternoon. We're working through the start-of-the-year glitches and by and large, we're moving in the right direction in terms of transportation. We're also offering free breakfast and lunch for all students in elementary and intermediate school as part of the federal lunch program. Since we're not in the federal program at the high school level, only those who qualify for the benefit will receive the free or reduced-priced meals. Now, in terms of bond update and bond-funded renovation activities, there are simply not enough thanks to share for facilities, maintenance, and technology. The early summer rain and COVID-19 supply shortage created unanticipated delays at three of our schools under the final phase of construction, and we did have to make the difficult decision to cancel the transition day for students at Hall Elementary and Ed White Elementary and to extend the summer break to this past Wednesday for Landale Elementary. But despite the challenges and the crews practically running out the back door as the students are coming in the front door, it was a great week of exploring the new learning spaces for students at these schools. So every student has a new classroom, and while some areas in these schools are off-limits right now, day-to-day learning is happening in beautiful new spaces. And I especially want to thank Paul Miller and his project managers for their tireless efforts. We still have more work to do and we hope to have the work completed later this fall. So, bottom line is a lot, not only did teachers work hard and prepare, with additional preparations in the final weeks leading up to school, but really, a lot of logistical work happened as well in order to put smiles on the faces of our children and staff members with the start of the new school year. So that, that concludes my brief remarks regarding the first day of school this year.
And thank you, Dr. Williams. All right, thank, thank you for that update on the first couple days of school. Next, we'll move on to Item 10, the District and the COVID Update.
Yes, I'll make some introductory, introductory remarks this evening. So, if we move to the next slide, it provides an overview of our public health protocols, and you'll hear more about these protocols as we move through the presentation, presentation this evening. I'm not going to read you through each of these because we'll, we'll address them in more detail, but we will talk about face coverings, we'll talk about, I also want to share that we're continuing our cleaning practices from last year, social distancing during breakfast and lunch at elementary schools, and providing additional spaces for meals at the secondary levels for, for students to spread out. We are continuing to communicate with our community regarding positive cases. You'll hear about practices for informing parents regarding close contacts, and you also hear details relating to the state requirements pertaining to exclusion of symptomatic and positive cases. And we've also are temporarily restricting access for, by appointment only. And finally, you'll hear information about our efforts to monitor community spread. I would like to ask our Division Counsel, Leila Sarmekanik, to provide a legal update on face coverings this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. As you all know, the Texas Supreme Court has not yet ruled on the merits of the litigation relating to Executive Order GA 38 and its prohibition of mask mandates. The legal uncertainty surrounding this matter would make it very difficult to enforce a mask mandate currently in CCISD. The legal process in the court system is one way to challenge the governor's executive order. Another lawful avenue for overturning the executive order would be for the Texas Legislature to enact legislation negating the governor's authority on this matter. CCISD continues to strongly encourage face coverings, asking its employees, students, and visitors to wear face coverings when indoors.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and, and Dr. Williams. Begin with the current trend data for COVID-19. As of noon today, we had 210 active cases, which included 165 students and 45 staff. This represents staff or students on campus, on a campus or building within 48 hours of a positive or they were symptomatic, presumed positive. We also had 347 in quarantine. This does include the 210 active cases as well as additional self-reported quarantine. I did check at 7 o'clock tonight, we did have 282 active cases and 540 quarantine. Want to share with you some responses to some frequently asked questions. The first is what happens if a student tests positive for COVID-19? A student who does test positive- Student who does test positive shall not return to school until 10 days have passed, symptoms have improved, and they are fever-free for 24 hours without medication. And this is from the Texas Department of State Health Services requirements. Absences will be excused and work may be completed upon return. Students who are up to maintaining their schoolwork, of course, will have the ability to participate in asynchronous work through its learning or if approved by the Board of Trustees have access to remote, remote conferencing for up to 20 instructional days. Next question is what happens if an employee tests positive for COVID-19? If an employee tastes, tests positive for the virus, they are not allowed to return to work until 10 days have passed, symptoms have improved, and they are fever-free for 24 hours without the use of medication. If approved by the Board of Trustees, 10 days of COVID leave could be available. If a parent is notified that his or her student is a close contact, first of all, the close contact is a person who's been wearing, within six feet of a person who has been diagnosed as COVID-19 positive for more than 15 minutes without wearing a mask. Our district will inform families and staff members if they have been potentially exposed to COVID-19 in a school setting. The TEA also says school systems can only exclude students or staff members if they are actively sick or test positive with COVID-19. The Texas Education Agency says parents may opt to keep their child home or continue to send them to school as long as they are healthy. We cannot require close contacts to stay home if they have no symptoms. Next question, will staff be required to quarantine if determined to be a close contact? Fully vaccinated employees may continue to come to work as long as they are symptom-free. Unvaccinated asymptomatic employees may continue to come to work and will be required to take a rapid COVID test at least every other day prior to work per the Texas Education Agency. Again, this is for staff members, if they're determined to be a close contact. Same as the last, if approved by the Board of Trustees, 10 days of leave could be available. What will CCISD do if a class or school must close? We do have a health mitigation protocol. We are closely monitoring COVID-19 cases amongst students and staff as well as presumptive positive cases. In the event of a class or school that must close temporarily, our district will implement school-to-home instruction similar to, somewhat similar to last year. How is CCISD supporting vaccination efforts? Our district is working with health providers to offer onsite vaccination clinics at all intermediates and high schools. These are voluntary. Students will need to parent consent and must meet the age eligibility requirements. Our district will not be administering the vaccine, we will only provide the space for health providers. This partnership has already provided 14 vaccination opportunities at various sites across the district. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
And does the board have any questions? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dr. Williams, did you have some remarks?
I do not have anything else to add to that, Mr. President.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to take a little time of privilege. I wanted to take a moment and recognize that people were encouraged to submit public comment for today's meeting and some of those topics related to our meeting, such as the budget, COVID protocols, masking and unmasking, and our equity audit. I also want to remind everyone that the board is reading all comments that come into our individual emails while continuing, continuing to listen to teachers, parents, student comments on a wide variety of social media platforms, as well as taking individual phone calls and email from all constituents. The board is continually working with the district to continue to make various additional forums available to different groups in order to provide and receive information and gather feedback. I take us back to and remind everyone that the controversy this time last year was whether TEA had revised guidance to give districts up to eight weeks to limit in-person instruction and slowly increase the number of students that were brought back to campus. TEA had also clarified that local school boards could push back their start dates and allow districts to offer hybrid in-person and remote instruction for high school students in order to reduce the number of students on campus. In the meantime, local health authorities, who were watching their COVID-19 case numbers rise, issued a series of orders banning schools from offering in-person instruction through August and in some cases, through September. It was this situation that the district found itself in last year. Especially, we spanned two counties. Harris County deemed it unsafe, while Galveston County deemed it safe. The governor ultimately ruled that as long as districts had a plan for reopening, submitted that plan, then they could reopen on time. It was this flexibility from the state that allowed us to open last year. Just like last year, we find ourselves in the same situation in regards to face coverings. Harris County has mandated them while Galveston County has not. Let me be clear, your board will follow the governor's mandate for no masks. Also, just like last year, the district moves as one body. We do not have a Harris County CCISD nor a Galveston County CCISD. We are CCISD. I have mentioned before that the role of the board is governance, which means that all seven of us before you receive and take in information in regards to district finances, state guidelines, policies, and advice from all departments within the district in regards to what is legal and permissible and what is not. Dr. Williams, his cabinet, and administration, whom many have served this district for as long as I have been involved, and I have a sophomore in college that went K through senior, leave no stones unturned when providing solutions and making decisions, especially when it comes to running the everyday decisions of our district. We walk lockstep and support the decisions and recommendations offered as we know that they are in the best interest of all students and staff. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our custodial staff, who continue to do an amazing and outstanding job keeping our facilities sanitized and clean. Our teachers for continuing to love our children and provide them with the world-class education that they deserve. And our safety committee who reviewed our protocols and provided input into our safety protocol recommendations. Many in our community wondered if we could hold graduation back in the spring of 2020. I know, I had a graduate. I heard from the community. And we did. Many people wondered if we could open on time last year, and we did. I will not tell you that we will not face challenges, because we will, but I am confident that we will get it done and do it together. One of the wisest men I know said last year that we are going to have to build the plane while flying it. And I'm here to tell you, we're probably going to have to do that this year as well. And I think we will be doing some of that this year, but I'm confident that we have the knowledge, skills, and flexibility to be successful. And next, we'll move on to actions on items from closed session. Do I have a motion for item A?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation of Dustin Harden for Chief Technology Officer of CCISD.
Thank you for that recommendation, Mr. Bowen. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I got, I got Mr. Cattrall. Thank you, Mr. Cattrall, but thank you. So we have a recommendation for Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Dustin Harden. Do I have any questions, any comment? Seeing no questions or comment, I call for a vote, all in favor. And motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item B. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I would like to move that the board accept the superintendent's recommendation of Dr. Laura Glardan for the position of intermediate school principal.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Do I have a second? Mr. Sanchez, thank you. So I have a motion and a second for approval of intermediate school principal, Dr. Laura Glardan. Is there any comment? Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. And motion carries unanimously. And for our item C, our Level 4 parent complaint, we will reconvene in closed session for further discussion at the end of our meeting. Next, we'll move on to item 12, action on consent agenda. Are there any items that any other trustees wish to pull?
President Cunningham, I would like to pull Consent Agenda, item number nine.
And anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll call for a, for a motion. Dr. DuPont?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item nine.
And thank you for that motion, Dr. DuPont. Do I have a second? Mr. Cattrall, thank you for the second. Seeing no, no comment, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of presenting or recommending the consent agenda as presented minus motion or item nine? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Man, I missed that. Thanks, guys. And Ms. Davis, if you'll start us off for item nine, please.
The only comments I had, I know I've made comments previously in our workshop meeting about this item, so I have nothing further to add this evening. We can bring it for a vote.
All right. Will you make a motion, Ms. Davis?
You won't like my motion.
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I move to approve the 2021-22 Board of Trustees and Superintendent Core Values and Team Operating Procedures.
All right. Thank you, Dr. DuPont. And I apologize for misreading your comment. Ms. Davis?
That's fine. Thank you.
Do I have a second? So is there any comment on any item? Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of passing the motion, please raise your hand. And all, all opposed? And we'll move on to action item B, approval of virtual learning programs.
Yes, I'd like, I'll make some introductory remarks and then Dr. Bayard will share some information. And so I just want to remind the community that last spring, we advocated that, for the state legislature to approve virtual learning option for our students whose parents wanted them to have a virtual learning option. We believe most students learn best in person, but nonetheless, some students do, do well in an online setting, and we know that that's a preference for the parents of some of our students. And so we advocated for that as an option last spring. The legislature did not fund it. We are encouraged that a Senate bill has passed out of, has, has passed out of Senate Education Committee, is expected to go to House Education Committee tomorrow, and Dr. Bayard will make reference to that. But basically, that bill would allow for, allow for funding of local virtual learning programs. And so with this recently emerging, very recently emerging developments, we are bringing this evening to you a proposal to establish a K6 virtual learning program. And Dr. Bayard will provide an overview of our proposal.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I do want to point out that Senate bill, which, which was sponsored by Senator Taylor, is going through all of the steps that hopefully could provide guidance and funding for virtual, local virtual schools. I think every single one of those dots might be a time that we have tried to plan for this virtual school and, and might be the cause of my bald head now, as mentioned. This proposal is contingent on state funding and is a temporary health mitigation response to provide learning opportunities for students. I do want to point out, this is not, this is not the clear connections that existed last year in which we provided to any student who wanted any class throughout the year in any special program. This is much different from that. This program is designed, it's a virtual school for students in grades kindergarten through sixth grade. It is predominantly CCISD curriculum provided by CCISD teachers with both synchronous and asynchronous learning. We will provide specialized services that are available, that, that are virtual and on campus, not in the home. Virtual school staffing, we will staff this program using, by reassigning existing staff from grade levels with low enrollment, using unassigned FTEs and also with any staff that might be funded through ESSER funds if necessary to gain those additional staff members. Just some points that we wanted to make as far as the impact of, of this program. I think it's important for, for our community to understand that some brick and mortar teachers will have different class rosters. Some brick and mortar students will have different teachers, right? As classes collapse and consolidate based on the enrollment, that'll cause that. Some brick and mortar teachers will be teaching CCISD virtual learning and/or even different grade levels than, than where they are right now. Most students who choose CCISD virtual learning will, of course, have different teachers based on, on, on the numbers and which teachers are available. Art and PE may be taught through asynchronous instruction. Sixth grade math at the secondary level, sixth grade math and ELA would be, would be taught on level, and there would be options for honors courses. Soul studies and science may be taught through asynchronous instruction. At all grade levels, students will take a fine arts class and a PE class. In fine arts, that will be art, and PE would be personal fitness. We do want parents to know that there are continuation requirements that, that we are looking at this. Our virtual learning students will need to maintain 90% attendance, successfully complete assignments, and maintain active participation to be continued, continuously enrolled through clear, I'm sorry, it's not clear connections, we missed one, through this virtual program. Dual language programs, although we offer dual language, both one-way and two-way in brick and mortar, because of the limitations that we have, dual language programs will be limited to one way. And this is a fast turnaround, if approved, and so virtual learning, our students will start asynchronous instruction on Tuesday, September 7th. With that change, we, I'll provide a timeline next. So we're looking at asynchronous instruction on September 7th with synchronous instruction beginning on Wednesday, September 8th. So why those dates? Well, our next steps would include a launch tomorrow at noon to, to launch the online registration for parents. We're giving parents until, actually, we were going to go until 4:59 on Friday, we're extending that till Saturday, the 28th, beginning August 30th through September 3rd. That's, that's about one week that we would have to, to staff this program and look at all the schedule changes that would need to happen in order to begin the first day of virtual learning on September 7th. I don't want to muddy the waters with, with remote conferencing. This is not the virtual learning, but it is worthy of mentioning right now. This is not the virtual learning, but it is worthy of mentioning right now that the remote conferencing opportunity that we have for our students through TEA is a temporary, temporary program for up to 20 days. It is a mix of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. It is not virtual learning. It's exactly as it's defined by TEA and how it's called. It's remote conferencing. What this means is that because students are in and out based on their COVID diagnosis and quarantine, students will stay connected to their classroom teachers through its learning, but that, that class roster will change, could change every day based on kids coming in and out. So there wouldn't be any grades taken. It's not personalized. It's not taught by the student's classroom teacher. It can't be taught by the student's classroom teacher per the definition that we've been given by TEA. And instruction is aligned to our district's scope and sequence. So that is a part about the remote conferencing for pre-K through 12. And it is different from the virtual learning that I just presented. So I'll be more than happy to answer questions that you might have at this time.
Dr. Baird, thank you for the overview and presentation. A question for you about parents and students that remember clear connections and the on and off ramps at the nine weeks. Is that, I'm not sure if I missed that today, if that's a part of this option?
Thank you for asking that. Our intent is to provide an option for, for students who are perhaps medically fragile or, or want an alternative. We're not going to mandate masks. We want an alternative for students to have. And so our recommendation is that these parents have their kids in for at least the duration of the semester.
And then just a follow-up question. The, the funding that we anticipate from the state is for the entire academic year? Or we don't? It's still too early to know?
I think it's still too early to know that. It's still going through the legislative process. So it is too early to know how, how long it'll be funded.
Basically, it basically would allow us to count the students as present for funding purposes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cottrell?
Yes, sir. So the funding was the question that I was going along the lines of. So and for Dr. Williams, can you clarify how the legislation funding is going to go? Because, you know, the, the last thing that we want to do is we're trying to prove a budget, and then all of a sudden we make a commitment, and we want to make sure that if they're funding it one for one? Or do we know how their funding is anticipated?
So, and I would ask Dr. Baird to elaborate on my response if that's helpful. But basically, the, the key part is, is on the revenue side because we have approved allocations, particularly in terms of teaching, teaching positions that we would shift from brick and mortar in-person learning teaching positions to teaching in a virtual, in the virtual learning program. And so what's key is on the revenue side, that we're able to count those students for, for attendance. So if, if the funding, this, the bill introduced by Senator Taylor is approved, then the budget that you'd be approving this evening provides the funds necessary to, to do this. Again, there, there hypothetically could be a small role for ESER dollars to play, but it would be a small role if, assuming the legislation passes. Anything else you would elaborate on?
The funding is based on ADA. It's not to pay additional teachers. No additional funding. The funding is, is through ADA.
For average daily attendance.
No stipend or anything like that, you know, I mean, teachers having dual responsibility if they're teaching some.
Not as currently drafted in the Senate bill language.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm curious if there, if there is extra duty, extra work on teachers to do those types of things. I don't know, we didn't write the bill. I'm just putting it all into perspective.
We're not looking at teachers doing this in extra duty.
Do we know?
They're being limited, but hopefully it would be teachers that could teach a half a day and then, and plan the other half a day. So we're looking for teachers that, that would take this on with, with limited numbers of teachers that, that might provide any additional support outside their regular teaching duties.
And, and as people are, are able to sign up starting soon, or tomorrow, right?
That's correct.
The bill has not passed yet. Everyone anticipates it to setting expectations for the parents that see an opportunity because their child is immune compromised or they don't feel safe with where we're at right now. Just to make sure expectations are consistent with everyone that we anticipated. However, you know, we're proceed with caution.
We want to proceed with caution as well as open arms to any parents that might not have enrolled their children yet. We, we welcome them to enroll their children and register them for, for this virtual learning proposal.
Mr. Bowen?
I know at the end of last semester, or at the end of last year, when the legislature was still in session and it looked like a bill similar to this might pass, we had very well-developed plans for the future of online learning in CCISC. Now, I mean, is there something different about the bill that's being considered now that has caused us to change direction and offer a much more limited option? I mean, why are we, why are we offering a smaller option instead of what we were planning last semester when it looked like this might pass?
Senate Bill 15 doesn't have all of the, it's not the full version of what we were advocating for last year. In our original plans and of course, taking the timing into consideration, we were planning for a full, robust virtual program. At that time, remember, the COVID rates had fallen substantially, and there was not the interest to pull off such a, such a program. And so there are many similarities between this. But at this time of, of the second week of the school year already, to pull off a full K12 program, it would disrupt just about every school system in place.
And so I guess, is there a possibility that maybe going into next semester, if it turns out that parent interest is a lot higher than we maybe anticipated, that some of those options might be relooked at?
I think we have to be open to any possibilities. The biggest question that we have right now is how many would sign up? And that is something that we don't know. It has been the, the point that has promoted us quickly and stalled us repeatedly over the past number of months, even going back to last year.
Dr. Dupont?
My understanding is also that there are pieces of this bill that are much different than what was being looked at in the spring in terms of funding online education and in, in terms of doing it as an actual plan for learning rather than a health mitigation effort, which it seems that this is more an attempt to put something in place to be something there for health mitigation factors. I think there are pieces, I mean, I know that even within the bill, there's nothing right now that defines how attendance will be taken, right? Or what will be counted, how attendance will be taken to actually count to get the ADA funding. I think there are a lot of questions still that are not there in the bill. And I, I think, you know, in terms of what I've been watching in, to do online learning, there's a lot of other opportunities out there that we've talked about and advocated for rather than just as a health mitigation plan. So that's my understanding of pieces of that, that bill, too.
This is not a permanent, long-term solution that, that has been created out of Senate Bill 15. Senator Taylor wrote this with knowing where we are right now, I believe, as a state and, and, and some students not enrolling in schools or finding other, other solutions to meet their needs.
I do have a couple other questions. I, a question about the ESER funds that potentially, made reference to that potentially there will be some needed. This would, I assume, be in addition to the ESER funds that we've already talked about spending for this year, which is on the order of 10 million?
We, we would need to look for ways of reallocating funds. For example, some funds that, that might exist come from laptop funds, which we might, using, using other E-rate funds that, that will pay for laptops. We might have additional funds that, that could be swapped over for, for hiring teachers. That's a big unknown because we don't know how many teachers we would need to hire or if we can pull it off with our existing staff based on the numbers that, that might register over the coming week.
So as presented today, though, there is not the expectation that it would change the budget that we're going to be looking at later this evening? Or is there?
There's not an expectation that it would change the budget that we know of.
No, it would, it is anticipated that it would be within the, the dollars as appropriated.
And then I, just to clarify, students may also not be associated with their home school if they enter this.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. Students who enter this virtual learning will get their, they'll be assigned to a new campus number. It'll be a virtual learning, CCIC virtual learning with their own county campus number. And so they will not be a Ferguson Saylor or a Brookwood Bear, Bowers, Schlag Bear, sorry.
Brookwood's also bears.
Okay, good, yes. Thank you.
And then another question I have is you referenced in the slide art for fine arts and personal fitness for PE in elementary school. What about at the secondary school for sixth graders?
So for sixth graders, music was such a difficult course last year with, whether it was choir or the pre, the pre-classes to band or orchestra. In conversation with Mr. Goodman, he and, and his staff are going to do everything they can to provide opportunities for students when, when they return, to provide them introductory opportunities into music so that we get kids into music, into choir, into band in seventh grade, in eighth grade, and beyond.
I, as a, as a follow-up on that comment, I would just note that, that this past year and a half has been a huge hit to our visual and performing arts programs. And while that's a great opportunity for children to get involved in, and they need to at the sixth grade level, it's very, very difficult to make that happen virtually, online. And it, it has been a huge hit to the programs. And just to note that, that hit continues for six more years past that as the students go through intermediate and then high school. So I, just in anything that we do, I hope that there are continued conversations with Mr. Goodman and fine arts and recognizing what the directors are facing in all of these programs, for the future of those programs.
Certainly.
And then I, the, the remote conferencing, I, I don't get it all the way. I know that there are things that are required or are now recommended within the TEA guidelines where they use those words, remote conferencing. I don't get it, but are we doing it to meet the requirements that were laid out by TEA? And, and this will meet those requirements? And can you?
This is the only way that we can attempt to earn any ADA average daily attendance for students who have been quarantined or, or they're homesick or, or they're medically fragile, if it's, if it's a temporary condition. At the elementary level, it requires students to have two hours of synchronous instruction. We'll try to meet that and then two hours of asynchronous instruction. But the kids are popping in and out as, as they need. And so we might have, I'm going to make up a number, but if there are 100 kids in there tomorrow, it could be that you have 120 the next day, but then a different 80 on the third day as, as they pop in and out based on when they return to school. This, this was created because the mandatory exclusions that TEA and the Texas Department of State Health Services is requiring for a minimum of 10 days for students who are COVID positive or are presumed positive.
So the purpose of the remote conferencing as it's going to be set up is to, that they will actually have a CCISC teacher that they can talk to and get questions answered?
That is correct. We still want our students linked to their home teacher and teachers through its learning and CSO and using those programs that they use on a daily basis of following those lessons that teachers have in their, in their grade books and submitting their coursework as best as possible through, through, through those mechanisms. Because during this time, if, if students are participating in this, then, then at least we get ADA credit and, and the student gets acknowledged that they're participating.
And I appreciate that Dr. Baird has been very explicit about the limitations of what it is. I mean, it is better than nothing. It is, it is, it is making the best of a difficult situation with students needing to be out of school and having, having the opportunity to conference with, with a CCISC teacher regarding the grade level, grade level curriculum.
And it, will it go from all the way through 12th grade or is it just?
It would be, it would be K through, K through six, right?
The remote conferencing, we are planning for pre-K through 12, as, for K through 12, available. And we're working on plans, but it's very creative plans of, of trying to use existing staff and, and sharing, sharing those days to where knowledgeable staff members who have knowledge of the curriculum, who might not necessarily have any classes, but could, could share the responsibilities for an hour or a couple hours at a time.
And that, pre-K through 12 for the remote conferencing is just like for the virtual learning, correct? Like in, in terms of grade level coverage, I guess?
No, this is much different. But I, I don't even want to, I don't want any comparison between this remote conferencing because it's not, I don't want to overemphasize the learning opportunities because of the kids popping in and out of this.
Right. Okay. Are there any other questions? I had, I, I had revised, I guess, amendment to the original motion, so I wanted to read that. It's a little, the language is a little bit different because it, it was an addition in there. So as the amended, I move that the board approve implementation of the Clear Creek ISD virtual learning program for the 2021-2022 school year as presented, contingent upon Texas legislative funding for such a program and the board approve implementation of a remote conference program as presented. And the underlying further?
So if I can just add, basically the change between this and the motion that was in the board packet is it does not reference clear connection specifically in order to, to communicate. So it's the motion that's in the agenda information item, but replaces clear connections with the phrase Clear Creek ISD virtual learning program.
Gotcha. Does that make sense? Okay.
I was going to make that recommendation.
I was. Any other comment?
I saw it, too.
I saw it, yeah.
Dr. Dupont?
I do have a comment in that, I mean, this is huge. And I, I just want to make that clear to everybody. This is huge. It's, it's huge that the district was able to do this, potentially if we are able to. We can only do it if it's funded. I'm a bit frustrated that we've had to, we had a better program that we were actually presenting and advocating for the funding. And in my mind, advocating for allowing public school districts to do the virtual programs is still something that needs to be on our advocacy agenda because this is not it. This is something to make up for other things going on that are happening right now in the world of COVID. And I'm glad that it has been presented and passed the Senate. It concerns me a bit. I looked on it today and it appears that one, Royce West, one of the people that is actually on the list of. actually on the list of presenters for this that brought it forward, actually voted against it. And it does look like there was votes against and votes for. I'm not, I don't understand what's happening with that, and I know that's always frustrating in the legislature. So, and I, tomorrow it's being heard at the, in the House, and I think we should all be listening to that if we can and figure out what is going on with that. I think it was mentioned that potentially September 7th is the last day of the session, the extra session. That's the, that's potentially, I guess, the possibility that it could not get voted on until the 7th. Hopefully, it will be voted on before then. But I, there's a lot of unknowns and for, I, I just want the community to know, the district is trying to put this option in place and do as much as possible under the guidelines that are being given to the district. And it isn't, just like last year, I mean, we went through cycles and clear connections. It's not going to be pretty at the beginning, and there is going to be some time to get used to it and to figure out. It will present an option for for students that do not feel safe going into those environments right now, for whatever reason that is, for their families, for themselves, whatever. So, I mean, I fully support us. I'm, I'm amazed at the work that's been done already, and I know the work that is going to have to be done to make this happen. And I'm amazed at that and thankful for that. And and I hope that it goes through the state, and I hope the state, the legislators realize the work that is being done by the districts to to meet the needs of their communities.
I want to thank a substantial amount of work, massive amount of work from Dr. Engel, Ms. Hughes, Dr. Silva, Dr. Staley, Dr. O'Pry, Ms. Paulson, a lot of hands that have gone into this, just to revamp somewhat what we could from from this past spring and make it possible for now.
And I guess what, the only other thing I would add is for people to allow grace and to to listen. I mean, I know there will be information coming out about it. I know that people will have to listen and get answers, and I, just bear with us, I guess. And we're, we're trying to meet the needs of all of the community and all of our students.
Thank you for that comment. Mr. Bowen?
Yes, and and just to kind of echo what Dr. Dupont said, I mean, I, I think from the very beginning, I was an advocate for virtual learning because of the opportunity it promised. I mean, there are, we did find out last year that there are students who learn better in a virtual environment than they do in the classroom. Every student is different, and that's an option that didn't exist before. Many students did not, did not succeed and had to be pulled back into the classroom, but some of them did. And some of them found that as a better option than what, than what they had before. And I, I think it is, it is kind of disappointing that this option is not that. And I know it's not realistic to to bootstrap an online option in the space of a week after we find out that the House has a quorum back. So what I'd encourage us to do, I mean, if this goes into place after the House acts, is continue working to develop this program and make it stronger and sustainable and and really serve the needs of students who learn better this way. And and not just think of it as a COVID stopgap. I, I think that if this program went away at the end of the year, after COVID is no longer a threat, and that was the end of virtual learning, I don't think that would be a good outcome. I, I think the vision for this district is personalized learning, and there are students who learn better online. And and so we need to be able to serve them. And the, I, I hope that this program will be a step in that direction and not a misstep that prevents us from doing it forever. And so I guess that's really all I have on it, but.
Mr. President.
Mr. Sanchez? I, I echo Mr. Bowen's sentiments, and I, I would just add that I believe that as a district, I don't question our ability to execute an excellent program, an excellent online program. I think, back to Dr. Dupont's remarks, I think it's ultimately incumbent on the state legislature to make decisions that recognize the dynamic environment that we're in and the continued challenge that our teachers and parents and administrators are facing and ensuring that we provide excellent public education. And so I absolutely agree with Mr. Bowen. I believe that we know that we can deliver a program that maps to what we believe is a standard in the district. I think we need to just make sure that the legislators recognize that this isn't something to decide in a special session after everything else has been discussed. This should have been a priority during the legislative session, and I think it's incumbent on them to help support this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Sanchez. Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I, I'll go ahead and pile on on the legislature. I'm very disappointed that they have put us in this position with all the politics and Kabuki Theater and tying our hands that they've done from the beginning of this, the original session this year. It's unconscionable, the position that they've put school districts in. And I hope that our community understands that it's not just that we don't want to do these things, it's that we can't do these things because our legislature doesn't support us. Thank you.
I, I was just going to say, if, if nobody else had anything, that, I said it before when we talked about virtual learning, that this is, when you, when you look at years ago, like three or four years ago, when we were talking about school start times and and things of that nature, this is one of the perfect avenues that helps address some of those issues. As Mr. Bowen said earlier, we found that, you know, online learning, is it for everybody? No. But did some kids thrive? Absolutely. So I, I agree with Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Davis for, you know, recognizing that we were ready. I, the district was ready. And I know if this is passed, that it's going to be hard work. And I've said it before, our administration, our staff, you guys make the impossible look possible. And as a wise man told me, when you're good at something, you make it look easy. You guys make it look easy, but we recognize it ain't easy. We recognize the hours that you guys are going to have to put into implement. We recognize the, the fumbling, the, the, the mixing up of schedules, everything that goes into it, that the average person does not recognize or acknowledge. We know that you guys, as I look at Ms. West and a few other people, you guys are going to have to juggle. We, we know it. And so we acknowledge that, and we thank you guys for, you know, putting in the hours and making it possible for our constituents and our students. So, thank you. And Mr. Catrill, if nobody has anything else, I will entertain a motion.
Well, I will make that motion, and I. All of it?
Really, really to the line.
The whole thing, right?
That, to the line.
Yes, okay. So I move that the board approve implementation of the Clear Creek ISD Virtual Learning Program for the 2021 to 2022 school year as presented, contingent upon Texas legislative funding for such a program and the board approved implementation of a remote conference program as presented.
I would like to second that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any other comment? I call for a vote, all in favor, and motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for deciphering.
Yeah.
Dr. Williams' calligraphy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And next, we'll move on to item C, which is consider approval of agreement for the purchase of attendance credit, netting chapter 48 funding. Mr. Kohlenberg, come on down.
Well, I appreciate the special board meeting for my last one. Okay, this item is, it's purely not on the consent agenda because of the, the language and the recommendation that's need to be in the board minutes that I have to submit by the first of September. But basically, this is, I guess, July 15th, we got notification that our local revenue was in excess of the entitlement for 2021, for 2122, in that our weighted, our wealth per weighted average daily attendance was about $54.54 compared to the $49.28. This is nothing new. It, this is, in the old days, they called this Robin Hood or Chapter 41. We don't have to pay any money to the state because we're considered a gap district as long as we keep our tax rate at the compressed rate plus no more than eight cents. But we do have to jump through some hoops each year to be in compliance. So in early August, I did submit our option three as our selection, and the commissioner approved that on August 6th. And now we need to submit this agreement with board minutes approving such by the first of the month. I guess that's really it in a nutshell.
All right. Are there any questions from the board?
Yep. The recommendation on this one's a mouthful as well.
I know. Hearing no questions, I'll call for a motion.
President Cunningham, I make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Trustees for the 2021-2022 school year delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code TEC 11.1511(c)(4) to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under the TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under TEC 49.006. This includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attending, attendance credit, netting chapter 48 funding.
And thank you for that mouthful, Ms. Davis. Appreciate that. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any comment? Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. And motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item D, consider approval of the resolution of the Clear Creek Independent School Board of Trustees regarding sick leave for COVID-19.
Good evening. I just want to start by thanking you so much for the high level of support that you have provided for CCIC employees during this challenging time. In December of 2020, you approved the continuation of the CCISD COVID CARES Act days that were previously mandated by the federal government during the summer of 2020. The provision of these days expired, expired at the end of June of 2021. For this reason, we began surveying our neighboring school districts to see if, what they were considering originally in June and July, they weren't making any decisions about it. But in recent weeks, they have, most have transitioned to having approved or planning to approve additional leave for employees who have tested positive for COVID. Of these districts that are providing these days, or generally, they are providing 10 additional days for COVID leave.
So our proposal tonight is that the district grant employees up to 80 hours of sick leave to be used by December 31st, 2021, in the event they or family members in their household test positive for COVID-19, and they submit documentation of the positive lab result. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, Mr. Catrill?
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. President. So paid sick leave to be used by December 31st, 2021. So those 10 days and 80 hours are only good for the next five months? Or how many months? Four months? And then what do we anticipate, do we anticipate, you know, January 1, 2022?
As we did last year, we'll, we'll step back, reevaluate, and if necessary, submit another proposal for your consideration.
So this is addressing just this first half of the school year?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Dupont?
Again, I'll ask the question about the impact on the budget that we've already looked at.
So one of the things that, it's really hard to put a dollar amount on it because if the employees, they have days in their bank. And so if they're able to use these days, if they weren't able to tap into these days, they'd still have days in their bank. So it'd be a net effect of zero because they're getting paid either from their accrued leave days or not. So the effect may be down the road when employees who might retire, resign, and get a sick leave payoff, they may have more days in their bank than they would have had, had they not had these days available.
So, so we don't expect one, a difference to the budget as, as already presented to us?
Right, in the short term. She's, it's hard to predict long term. Right.
And, and I will say, thank you. Thank you for looking at this option and for, for considering it and for looking at what was possible. I, I'd like to think that we are not just responding to what happens around us, but that we're responding also to what we hear within our own district and, and looking at what the possibilities are. And I appreciate that it was looked into and it's being brought before us as an option.
And I guess, the only comment I have is just making sure that we communicate with staff that it's for, you know, the, the rest of the year, and that we'll pick this back up in the spring and look at it, you know, January of 2020, 2022. So. Ms. Davis?
I, I think I misunderstood. I thought it was for the entire school year. But I, I can totally understand the necessity to have these 10 days available through June, December 31st, and then we'll see how things are going after that. That was my only comment. I had thought it was for the whole entire school year. But I, I, I see the necessity for allowing employees to have an additional 10 days to quarantine if they provide that positive COVID test. Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to mention that this is not the original version of this resolution that first came to us. And I'd like to thank you and commend you for going back and taking a closer look at this, sharpening your pencil, and including the families as well. I, I think that was an important step, and I do appreciate your hard work on that.
Thank you for your guidance.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Larson. Any further comment?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation to approve the resolution of the Clear Creek ISD Board of Trustees regarding sick leave for COVID-19.
And do I have a second?
Yeah.
Mr. Sanchez, thanks for that assist, Mr. Larson. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote, all in favor. And motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And then, Ms. Binzai, I guess we got the approval of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget.
Yes, so tonight we reviewed during the budget hearing, the general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition budgets. The actual summaries that we are asking you to approve tonight are by function, and those are in page 275 through 277 of your board documents. So we are recommending approval of the balance general fund budget in the amount of 371,000, excuse me, 371,252,896. We are recommending a debt service approval of the debt service fund with revenues in the amount of 81,115,000, expenditures in the amount of 82,870,000, and the food service fund with revenues in the amount of 18,908,000 and expenditures in the amount of 17,78,000. And we'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Bowen?
I, I guess my question is, when we take this vote tonight, we're voting on a budget, not the tax rates, now that we've been through the tax rate hearings. So if, if we wanted to make additional adjustments. So if, if we wanted to make additional adjustments to the tax rate, when we discuss that, would we have the opportunity to do that after this budget is voted on, with the understanding that the budget locks us into our spending categories, but it, it does still open the opportunity for more discussion about the tax rate?
Yep. That's correct. We can amend, amend the budget based on whatever the tax rate is that the board approves in September. So it's based on this 29 cent tax rate right now. Board decides to go lower than that, that's fine, and we can adjust the budget appropriately.
Thank you.
I don't actually have a question. I have a comment that I don't think was brought up at the workshop, although we brought up a number of things, and that is that this budget meets all four of the budget priorities that were defined. I don't think we specifically called that out, and I think that's really important that we did go back and it does address the things that were priority items. So I, thank you for that and for considering those, those things from the board too, and those issues. And I, I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of key things to be said about this, and I think we've said that, we said them at the workshop, and I think we'll continue to say them relative to.
I guess if I, if I could add another comment, just since we do have a lot of people watching these meetings for, or watching this meeting maybe who haven't seen a school board meeting before and the process that goes into this, this is the result of a months-long process that started with identifying goals and a lot of hard work from your team in the meantime, and then a workshop for a lot of questions which you answered well, and now it's in front of us to vote on tonight. So I, I really do appreciate the process that, that your team goes through to prepare this for us. I, I think there's a reason our district's financial position is as strong as it is, and it's because of all of the hard work that y'all put in. So thank you for everything you did to get us to this point, and, and it seems to be a pretty big success for us. So thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Anyone else?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to comment, and it's really not part of this year's budget. First of all, I'd like to commend this year's budget because it, especially the M&amp;O balances, which I think is a big step forward for the district. In the out years, though, when you project this out, we eventually fall off a cliff, and we'll all have to deal with that when we get there. But that is due specifically to state funding that we get now that expires in, in '25. So I, I would just say I'm really pleased with what I see and with the work that's gone into it. I think we're in good shape for today, and as far as what, what may come, we'll deal with that when we get to it.
Yeah, I get, and not to make this last longer, but I guess what I'd add to that is that I don't want anybody to think that we are waiting until we get to that time. The, the work that goes on by finance to, to project out the possibilities, most districts aren't looking out five, even five years, and we look out even further than that because of what you all do. So I, I think that's very, very much to be commended, and that's why we are in the strong position that we're in. And the only other comment that I'll definitely give is to make note that we are funded on a formula. School districts are funded on a formula. And so, and, and there are lots of implications within that about what the state gives versus what we get from federal dollars, but the final funding that we get is based on a formula, and that's something that not, is very complicated and not a lot of people in the state and even in the legislature understand. But there are huge implications from that too, and that, which makes it even more difficult to project out what's going to happen because we don't know what's going to happen in even the next legislative session. So there's a lot of things that y'all juggle to get to this point, and we appreciate all the work that's done.
I was just going to make the comment, just to piggyback off of what Dr. DuPont said. I think when we looked at the budget and we realized that state funding was reduced to 28% of our budget now, and we look back, gosh, to 2008? I think it was 2008 or 2011 when it was roughly almost 50/50. So I'd like to remind our taxpayers at home that you're, you're, you're funding that. So I just wanted to point that out. And.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation. The board approved the fiscal year 2021, 2022 general fund, debt service fund, and child nutrition fund budgets by function as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Mr. Larson, thank you. And seeing no further comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? And we will move on to information and discussion. Dr. Bayard with our equity audit.
And as he's approaching the mic, I'll make some introductory remark, remarks. I'll share that in addition to the equity audit conducted by an outside consultant being posted with board materials, we've also posted the slide deck, which is our response to that, as well as a narrative, as well as a narrative document. And I want to emphasize, as Dr. Baird will elaborate on, rather than focusing on parity of student outcomes, we want to focus on maximizing the growth of individual students, so basically personalizing learning. And so take, for example, third grade curriculum. We don't want to just teach to just the third grade curriculum in terms of third grade reading level. We want to recognize students' strengths and opportunities, and, and a student might be at a fifth grade reading level, and they should be challenged to grow as well. Or a student may be at a first grade reading level even though they're in the third grade, third grade, and so they need the intervention and support to help them grow as, as well. And so basically, Dr. Baird will present the findings and recommendations. That does not, some of them, we know we will not implement, but basically, this outside report gives us information, and tonight is a discussion where we will give some examples of, of steps that we'll be taking, but also examples of things that we will not be doing. So with those introductory remarks, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baird.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Williams. I want to begin just with a history of, of our association with Curriculum Management Solutions. We conducted a curriculum management audit in 2009 that, that helped us organize our curriculum and create better depth and alignment. In 2014, we had an update to the 2009 Curriculum Management Audit. It was really a review to see if we've implemented all the recommendations or that we chose to implement. I will point out that one of the recommendations, for example, in the 2009 audit was to implement a program-based budget. Clear Creek ISD didn't agree with it. We don't aspire to that, and we didn't implement it. Just what, it's not part of our DNA. In 2020, the, the equity audit was commissioned by CCIC through Curriculum Management Solutions. Some additional background, in May 2020, our, our board approved a new strategic plan, including Strategy 5, we will ensure our community, parents, staff, and students exercise shared ownership of our mission, and then include specific results statement, increased inclusivity for all. Later that year in September of 2020, the board approved the 2020, that's 21, superintendent targets, which did include equity audit. And the equity audit was requested by the then superintendent and commissioned in 20, December of 2020. Since that time, from December 2020 through April of 2021, an off-site audit was conducted that included document reviews, data analysis, and interviews with a number of, of staff For the four or five months that followed, from May through, through this month, the audit document was drafted, revised, and finalized. This audit looks at various aspects of our district's operations that impact and influence student learning in the system, looking at plans, policies, program enrollment, data, discipline retention dropout data, and student achievement. There's a central question that was asked by the equity audit. To what extent is CCIC supporting and assuring equity and equality in its treatment of and services to students? Before I get to the findings from that, I, I want to make some notes and remarks about this equity audit. First, our, our educators in Clear Creek ISD teach the Texas essential knowledge and skills, and our educators follow the CCIC written curriculum. In addition, policy EF Local explicitly disallows the use of district resources to promote or endorse race or sex stereotyping, or race or sex scapegoating. And third, CCIC does not support, nor will, we will not implement the teaching of critical race theory. Critical race theory is not in the audit. There are various uses of equity in, in our modern language, financial equity, racial equity, social status equity. This equity report does not refer to any of those three. This is about academic equity and social emotional equity. So I propose to you what, what it is in CCIC. Equity represents high standards for all, not different standards for all. It is providing students interventions, supports, and extensions as needed, not just providing interventions regardless of need. It is about, it is based on academic or social emotional need. It is not based on race. It is based on our core values. It is not based on hate for any reason. It is an awareness of mental models to avoid assumptions, not making assumptions about students based on language, looks, race, social status, siblings. You know, for example, if my, my sister was a, a talker, it doesn't mean that I'm going to be a talker also, which that was true. It is about maximizing individual student growth. It is not about allowing average or proficient to become the standard. I have draft there because our, our, our policy committee might consider defining equity at some point. I'd like for you to take a look at the images on the screen there. These kids could very well represent any of our kids. Do we know who is gifted and talented? Who might be trilingual? Who's first generation? Who's a child with autism? Who's adopted, shy, or struggling academically? Or perhaps musically gifted? Or straight A student? Let me tell you. Actually, I can't because these are stock images. However, what I do know is that every parent wants the very best for their individual child. Every educator here in Clear Creek ISD wants the very best for each of our individual students in Clear Creek ISD. So with that, I'll share with you the audit findings and recommendations. Per the CMC audit from Curriculum Management Solutions, they have identified strengths. They've identified our strength, one strength as our commitment to the whole child and responsive to equity challenges. Strength they have found is that we have high student achievement. Our student achievement exceeds that of the state. We have opportunities for meeting individual needs, and they've identified our focus on student behavior supports. The first finding is in Focus Area 1, Vision and Expectations. Policies do not provide clear definitions or establish expectations for equal access and comparable learning outcomes for all students. I share with you the findings as they are written, word for word. Second finding, or two, under Academic Achievement. Overall, district performance on STAR was at or above state averages, but disproportionate for some ethnic and special population groups. Finding two, economic need in CCIC had a demonstrated influence on performance on the STAR test and EOC, but with some exceptions. I'll comment just a little bit about both of those. The first one, we saw this in the House Bill 3, the mandatory House Bill 3 reports that we had to provide back in, in December and January. The second one, economic need, they were unable to find a correlation with economic need and, and with economics and performance on STAR. And so that's why they had some exceptions, because it didn't fit a typical pattern. Focus Area 3 on access and equity, there were three findings. The first is the diversity of the student population in Clear Creek ISD was not represented in its personnel. Staff experience levels were inconsistent with the levels of at-risk students. They mentioned inconsistent because we didn't fit a pattern of experience levels in at-risk the population of at-risk students on campuses. There wasn't a trend, so it was inconsistent. Finding 3.2, identification of students for special programs and participation in advanced placement courses was not proportional with student representation in the total student population. And finding 3.3, the rates at which students drop out or retained or are disciplined were not proportional with student representation by ethnicity and special population groups. Budgeted expenditures did not show a pattern for responding to need at elementary, intermediate, and high school levels. There were three recommendations given by Curriculum Management Solutions. The first is to adopt a clear vision and expectations for equity. Second is to initiate planning to attain parity in student outcomes and equity for all students. The third is initiate related professional development and coaching. I can tell you right now that my role, and I've been in the district 14 years, it's not about parity in, in student outcomes. Every student has their own needs. Some students already start off gifted, and they need opportunities to continue to excel. Some students are underperforming in some areas, and they need opportunities to meet at least the minimum standards. Again, we consider external recommendations from outside consultants. We sometimes implement them, and sometimes we do not implement their recommendations. So under the first recommendation, they did provide tasks. I, I'm not going to read all the tasks. And I'll also state that with any of these recommendations, before we implement or do anything with these recommendations, there will certainly be a conversation and communication with the Board of Trustees. So the first task is to define the district's beliefs and philosophy related to treating students in accordance with need and assuring equity. And the second is define expectation for critical areas that need improvement, in order of vision to become reality. I want to point out at least one of these, and that is in C, and you'll see these in all three recommendations, expectations related to access and economic isolation. I do not believe in this recommendation. Our schools are the hubs of our communities. We educate all students who are in our communities and come into our schools. We're not going to bus students based on a certain population of economic standing. We take all kids and we educate who we have in those buildings. The second recommendation, about initiating planning to attain parity in student outcomes and equity, is to develop a plan that specifies all goals related to board expectations that outlines processes, timelines, evaluation procedures, and roles and responsibilities. And these are the, based on, on, well, goals should address, you see all the goals there that should address program identification, retention disciplinary practices, recruitment and hiring practices, et cetera. I want to point out a couple of comments to this. The first one, program identification. The district has made strides to identify our gifted and talented students by, by administering an assessment for giftedness in the second grade. That's been going on for years. You know, some kids don't necessarily read by the time they get to us in kindergarten. They just need those first few years, and that has enabled us to identify more students this way. The second, retention and disciplinary practices. Mr. Davlin and his team have been training all of our staff members on positive behaviors, interventions, and supports, so that we have, it's not, not about any type of student, but it's about managing behaviors in the classroom equally consistently. The third, recruitment and hiring practices. We have aimed to We have aimed to recruit teachers from diverse areas all over. So, they recognize that and they put it in there, but we've already been working towards our recruiting practices. The fourth one is economic isolation of campuses. Again, it doesn't matter where our campuses are and which kids are in our campuses. We're going to educate them, and we're not going to split kids up based on their economic need, condition, or affluent. B is specific measurable outcome, actions supported the goals A, so the same follows. And C is identify other district plans and related processes that need revision in order to align with and support the district's plan for parity and equity. I made some, a graphical revision in this, and I messed up the task. So I'll read the task for initiate related professional development. It is correct in the board packet, in the packet that is online. The recommendation is to initiate professional learning with the task of establishing goals and guidelines for professional development initiatives. With this training, it is to integrate the instructional lens of mental models and how mental models connects with and reinforces special program implementation, tiered instruction and differentiation, classroom behavior management, discipline practices and supports, and replace or augment safe schools content and components with input from the District Committee on Content Components and Training Reflective Mental Models. Mental models is similar to the picture that I just showed you of not making assumptions about who our kids are. We take whoever our kids are, and we teach them. It's important that our district, as Jimmy Cuss says, that we do not allow average to become our standard. It's important that we maximize the growth of each individual student. So, I know sometimes our state wants to look at our averages, and sometimes if a student has a forty and another student has a one hundred, the average is a seventy, but that's not what we want for our kids. For the kid who starts off with a hundred, we want them to continue to excel. But the student that starts out with a forty, we want them to improve. We want all students to improve. So for some students, they need intervention, other students need extension. Every child deserves a personalized approach to their education in an equitable way. So these are our next steps. C C I C plans to accelerate its work to personalized learning. Personalized learning is responsive to the needs of students. Each student, ensuring he or she receives the instruction they need when they need it. Rather than focusing on parity of student outcomes, C C I C will focus on maximizing the growth of individual students. C C I C believes each child should receive interventions, extensions, and or supports based on their individual academic, programmatic, and or social emotional need in order to meet or exceed district goals. We believe in core values for all. We believe neighborhood schools are the hubs of our communities, and we will educate any child from that community regardless of economic status. C C I C does not promote, nor will the district implement, critical race theory. And our district will provide updates to our board on planned actions related to this equity audit, the recommendations, prior to any implementation. Welcome, any questions?
All right. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Davis?
From your perspective of this audit, do you feel that we have fallen short in a number of areas? Do you feel this audit really brought out some glaring areas where we're not doing the things we want to do with our students?
I think that we have opportunities to meet the needs of more students. I have close friends who work in the district, for example, who have students who are C student, making Cs. Sometimes it's at the very end, last push effort at the very end of a nine weeks or semester to get them over to that mark, and that is insufficient. We can do more to help each individual child. It's not about race. It's not about economics. It's about, it's not even about the individual program. It's about the individual needs of each child. And what this does, it at least it opens my eyes to other opportunities to help each child.
If I may, I just want to hit on something that you said because it got me thinking. And I'm going to go back to, and Ms. Hughes probably knows where I'm going with this. Board workshop, probably three and a half to four years ago. And we were doing a program evaluation of our G T program. And I know Dr. Dupont and Mr. Sanchez probably remembers this because Mr. Sanchez actually posed the question. And when we looked at the findings of our G T program, we realized that the students that were in the program didn't quite represent the demographics of our district. So it was Mr. Sanchez and I believe Ms. Brodal, if I remember correctly. I'm going back, and I've had lunch since then. But we didn't just look at just testing minority students. They asked the question, how many students are we missing, period? Not minority students, not white students, not black students, not Hispanic students. How many students is our G T program missing, period? And I believe it was Mr. Sanchez asked, what if we tested all students? Do you think we could capture them? And that's what we did, and that's now part of our policy and program. So just to let the public that is tuning in now realize what we were doing about four years ago, that's how your board and that's how your administration operates. Just to back up, that we're looking to help all of our children, not just a subset or not just a group. So that's the only comment I had.
I guess I'll just ask, why even use the word equity? Because, I mean, with everything that was presented, I mean, equity is a very politically charged term across the country. It means something different to every single person who hears it. I mean, why don't we come up with a different term? And we can, we don't have to decide on what it is tonight. Maybe it is personalized learning. But instead of using the word equity with all of the baggage that's attached to it, why don't we just develop a policy around some other term that kind of captures our intent for individual achievement? I mean, would that maybe be a better path forward than developing an equity policy specifically? Like, develop a policy that captures our values on the subject, but use a different word that doesn't have a lot of baggage to describe it?
I mean, I like the emphasis on growth for all students and what intervention supports does each individual student need in order to grow. And to some people, that's going to be equity. To some people, though, there may be baggage about what that word means.
Thanks.
Mr. Cottrell?
Yes, Mr. President. So, I'll echo what Mr. Bowen just said. I do think that if you go forward with whatever the programs, your proposals and everything, tread cautious. Just be mindful, be cautious about that term, you know, using that word equity. I know that we have programs in the district like Leader in Me, right? Leader in Me is a great program, in my opinion. That foundation brought it in, and it teaches kids how to be better students, be better community members. It's not about race one bit. You know, it's teaching kids how to look ahead and look forward. But I did see some things in here that I made several notes on that I just kind of questioned on it. One of them that I just wanted to go to was on page three thirty-one. And you mentioned it and then moved forward, but it was one of those tasks in the economic isolation of campuses. I don't think these people really know us that well, because we don't isolate any campus in this community.
That's right.
You know? And, speak up, absolutely. That's what it's about. But then it actually makes me kind of question the report. You know, do they really understand our community? Because we come together. We don't like the term equity, I'm just being honest. Critical race theory for the most part. You know, I think most of us don't want to go there. But I do like the idea of going from intervention to extension. You know, we want, we're okay with personalized learning. We want to make sure we bring the kids to that next level, and we're not going to stand at status quo. So we extend those children. But, you know, I wasn't around when this was suggested or done. But I think there's some items in here that I would really be cautious about continuing to move forward with. Other than that, that's it.
I sit before you, just as my gratitude for coming into this role, just, what, six weeks ago? Dr. Williams joined us in January. Over, I don't know how long, but even the word equity has taken on such a twist. And I understand the fear that our community has about that word. There's nothing hidden about that word of how we're addressing the need to support each individual student through intervention or extension and personalized learning. So whether it's equity or personalized learning, we need to find the right term that really accurately represents what we do in the district and what we believe in, in C C I C. But this audit was commissioned back last year in 2020, and we're bringing this proposal because we said we would after it was, not proposal, this audit after it was written. And so that's what we are here to do tonight.
And can I have one more comment? Because on that note, it got me thinking about one thing that maybe is not in here that we really want to, I really want to make sure that the community does know that we do really well, is work with our local nonprofits. Right? Communities and schools, our support system is amazing. You know, how much community support we get that is not bound by race or economic status or anything like that. And I don't see it in here. So, as I previously mentioned, how well do they know us? I question that. But they could have at least, you know, said, hey, you're doing this great. And you do have a lot of support for everyone in this community regardless of economic status. And, you know, if there's an equity factor, it's that we're all equal.
Dr. Dupont?
Go ahead.
I was about to say, our board operating procedures have some core values for the trustees and the superintendent. And one of those, I'd just like to read it verbatim. Student success, we are committed to sustaining an environment in which each student can and will succeed. Doing what is best for each student is our highest priority. We believe each student has the potential to enrich society by becoming a valuable, productive citizen. Our responsibility and our passion are to support each student's quest to reach his or her potential. Student success is our ultimate value. When I saw your, when you read that through your presentation, those charts, that value came through over and over again. I think it informed your presentation, and I found it frankly inspiring. I think it was just exactly the response to this audit we needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll kind of, I guess, build on that or jump off of that and just go back to, I'm, I don't think we need to be afraid of the word equity just because of what its implications are in the world. I think we need to go back to define it, like one of their recommendations was, and say what it means for our district. And I think you did take some of these recommendations. We didn't go to this organization asking them for all the implications of what, how we impact the community. Or we went for some very specific reasons. We went for some data. And I want to make the point that efforts relative to equity have been in place long before this audit. And you made reference to some of them, and you even had dates on some of them. This isn't something that was just done because everybody's out there doing equity audits or something like that. We, there were things that have happened or things that we have seen that we wanted to get more data on in order to figure out how to address things within the district. And it's something that's needed to ensure that we can provide each child what they need. And I don't think we can be afraid of that, and who are we to say that we shouldn't be paying attention to that? The, if you go back to the Special Education Program Review in 2018 and 2019, that found disparity relative to equity in special education numbers, both in learning that was occurring, in discipline that was occurring. I went into that report and found five recommendations just straight off that all had to do, didn't, none of them mentioned equity, but they all had to do with that. How are we addressing the needs of every student, each student within the district? In the time since then also, there were grievances presented and investigations done at the state level across all districts in the state that had to do with disparity relative to discipline for African-American students. That's true across Texas, it's true across the nation. And we are trying to figure out how to address it within our district so that we're serving each student. Last June, after the unrest across the nation, Dr. Smith put in place an advisory panel of students and one of staff to solicit feedback on the experiences of Black and Brown students and staff in this district. It's our responsibility to listen, to listen to every student and staff members within the district and do what is needed to make everyone feel safe and included in the learning environments that the district puts in place. We need to be listening to people's experiences and not imposing what we believe their experiences to be on them. I had a webinar, was listening to, somebody said that, in referring to all of this, said, "Representation is the lens through which we dream." And that really hit me when I heard it, and that's why some of the things are stated in here. And we need to figure out how to make that work for us, how it helps our students to the best level. The diversity at the top admin level. There are trustees sitting in front of you at this table that have been mentioning this issue since they got onto the board. It's true across Texas, and it's true across the nation. And we've been trying to figure out, how do we incorporate that into what we're doing? In that area, we know there are issues across the nation. The pipeline may not even have enough people in it to be able to fill those roles. But we have a responsibility to help, we can impact that pipeline. We can help students get into those roles as they get older, and we have a responsibility to do that. Our strategic plan, you mentioned specifically some things, the May 2020 plan and the things that are specific relative to, specifically using the word inclusivity. There were long discussions when the strategic plan was being developed about equity is not the right word to use, but using the word inclusivity, and I think that that's what you're hearing as you heard Dr. Bayard actually do the presentation. You're hearing those things come out. If you go through the strategic plan, you can see that, in fact, one of the comments is inclusivity creates unity. And I can pull out other, there is a collective moral imperative to invest in each person's capacity for growth and excellence. And I think that's what you refer to when you go through this plan and talk about how are we going to help each student. And Mr. Larson, you told, said something else relative to the strategic plan. You can, we can go through the strategic plan, and it is all over the place in there about how we are trying to help each student actualize their dreams, really. There's, there were lots of data included here on STAR results. When we looked at this back in January, we showed the same trends. It was the same thing, and you can go to other districts. It's the same things that are occurring, but we need to figure out how to help the students. How can we address all students' needs, each student's needs, so that they can show growth and have progress? And when we talked about it in goal setting, we weren't talking about setting different goals for different people or anything like that. We want to see growth in all students. We want to see progress, no matter where you are. And you might need something different, you will, every student's different. Everybody's going to need something different, but we need to figure Everybody's going to need something different, but we need to figure out how to do that. We asked for this equity audit, the board asked for this equity audit. It was part of the superintendent's targets. It was part of what we talked about, to get data so that we would have more information, so we would be informed about how to go about addressing any issues that were there. Yes, we know there are issues that are there, and how do we go about solving them? How do we go about addressing them to help all children, to impact all children in the right way? Just like you mentioned, we don't just take all the recommendations and do what anybody says. We've never done that before. That's not how CCISD operates, just like we didn't do that for the curriculum audit. What we asked for was information and data so that we could take that, the district could take it, look at it, and figure out what to do with it, and figure out how we best help our students and help our students get better. So, we keep, we keep getting data on discipline. We keep getting all of this data. We've always said that we don't want to just look at STAR. It's easy to use. That's what people use because that's what's out there, and that's what the state uses in its accountability system. I could show you a chart today that shows STAR results, and it has the exact same trend. The low economic is the lower performing on STAR. So, I don't know if that's related to the test. I don't know what it is, but that's why we don't just want to use STAR. We want to use all possible measures that we can find to show how are students growing, how are they achieving? So, as a trustee on this board, I'm going to continue to listen. I'm going to continue to research about what's happening around the area and state and nation in regards to equity because that's how people are talking about it. It doesn't have to be a bad thing. And we need to define it, what it does mean to us and how it's going to help every student. We have to understand the hurdles that our children face and understand the hurdles that anyone in our system faces, and then figure out how to implement best practices so that we are helping students achieve every day, and we're helping them get better. So, that's my long-winded comments relative to the equity audit.
Thank you, Dr. Dupont. Are there any other comments? Mr. Bayard, thank you for the presentation. And it is 10:18. The board will now reconvene back to closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, which is deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignments, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an employee. And 551.071, consultation with attorney. So, thank you to our audience for tuning in. I think this was our longest board meeting so far, but thanks for hanging in there with us.
Do you want to state whether or not actually based on the student matter or not?
And I call us back into open session at 11:25. Do I have a motion on number 11, item C, considered level four parent complaint?
Mr. President?
Yes.
In accordance with board policy FNG Local, I move that the Board of Trustees uphold the decision at the prior level. In addition, the board requests that the superintendent or a designee review current policies and accepted practices regarding athletic tryouts to report to the Board of Trustees by December 31, 2021.
All right. Do I have a second?
I would like to second.
Thank you for the second, Mr. Larson. Are there any comment? Here, no comment. I'll ask for a vote, all in favor, and motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a second.
And thank you for that, guys. I will adjourn this meeting at 11:26.
Let's just be the latest board meeting ever.
Really? Oh, come on. In your career?